Okay, good evening. This work session of the Ossio School Board is being conducted in the Media Center of Weaver Lake Elementary, Science, Math, and Technology School at 15900 Weaver Lake Road in Maple Grove. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session has ended. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their names, starting with my left.
John Morsted, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Tamara Grady, She/Her/Hers, School Board Member.
Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement.
Kamala, Director of Community Relations.
Peter Leatherman, owner of the Morris Leatherman Company.
Steve Schwartz, Principal at Bassett Elementary.
Kim Monat, Principal at Brooklyn Middle School.
Steve Floss, Assistant Superintendent for the Elementary Schools.
Kelly Parkard, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools.
Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Anthony Paterniss, Executive Director of Technology.
Brian Saberson Hall, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
Sarah Mitchell, School Board Member.
Heather Duglos, School Board Member.
Corey McIntyre, Superintendent.
And I, Tanya Simons, am present. Also, our Chair, Jackie Muscata-Jones, is not here this evening, unfortunately. She has a family member who's having a surgery this evening. But I do have her statement later on our work session to share. So at this point, the purpose of our work session is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. I'm pleased now to introduce Principal Lena Christensen to share a welcome on behalf of Weaver Lake Elementary. Principal Christensen.
Hi. So, welcome to Weaver Lake. I was told not to make a PowerPoint, so of course I did. Because otherwise, if we go off the cuff, who knows what's going to happen. So, again, we're thrilled that you're here at Weaver Lake. In our building, some of the things that you might not see which really fit our STEM, the STEM school, a lot of that has to do with outside, right? And so, our prairie, our access to the lake, our, all of that, these eventually, as you're seeing, will be growing herbs in our garden curriculum soon. We're being prepped for that. But the setting itself just really fits with our STEM programming, and we are grateful for that piece. So, I only have four slides, so don't freak out. So, our mission here is that our magnet school is a diverse and inclusive community dedicated to creating lifelong learners who are actively involved in inquiry, exploration, and discovery. So our model is really, what's the big idea? So it falls under inquiry, discovery, exploration, and achievement. So really, we, since I've been here with our leadership team and our staff, we really have two goals: STEM integration and being culturally responsive, looking at our culturally responsive pedagogy and our practices and strategies, and thinking about, with an equity lens on culture and race. So, one thing I just thought I would highlight, I was told I needed to highlight things. One thing that we're very proud of is kind of the reinvigoration of our STEM curriculum, standards-based. We have new science standards, we've got the new reading standards, and so every summer, our staff, grade level, and special, and EL come together, and we actually have written new value-added projects. There's about, this is on our website, you can actually go here, it's one of the features our families love. Why do they work the most? It's just a STEM school, it's just a technology school. So if I were to be able to do this, I should, I could go into try one, two, three, I could go, I could see by grade level. Oh, I'll make this work. Anthony? Nope. Sorry.
Just saying your name.
So you should be able to go in here. One of our, one of our things is, like, what gets more real life than the holding a Madagascar hazing cockroach? But you should be able to see what our driving question is, what our student outcomes is. If you're a parent, you can see what standards are addressed in each project. You can go in and you can actually see the scope and sequence of the lessons themselves, and then actually see the lessons. This will take a while to load, so we're not going to spend a whole lot of time here. And then you can also go in into the student showcase and actually see the students' projects. It's part of the way we make our Science and Action Fair live. But you can do that by try and see all of the things that are, that our STEM students are working on. And so really, some of the things that we have put into the inquiry and the phenomenon of being a STEM student, we use the question formula, because that's really the inquiry-based piece of it. The things that we've worked on within the being culturally responsive is really recognizing that all students learn differently, so hence a PowerPoint for those that need one. And also just family language background and your cultural identity matter. And that all comes into a classroom as a STEM student, and how are we going to meet all of those needs? And so really thinking, there's some strategies, K through five, that we've put in, such as everyone is trained and uses thinking maps, all the way from PE to music to EL to sped. Everybody is trained and has the expectation that they will use them, K through five. Our restorative practices and community building circles that we are implementing, and then really the hands-on learning. As far as the family language background and culture identity, just representation in curriculum, in who you see in the school, in student voice and choice in projects, and just thinking about that in the curriculum piece. So just some fun, or facts, these are just facts, I have some fun facts in the next slide, but just some facts about, yeah, these aren't that fun. The other ones are way fun, so just get ready for it. So we have 631 students. I think some interesting facts about us, that 62% of our scholars are BIPOC, so we are a very diverse school. 14% of them are non-resident scholars, so we are a magnet, and so we take scholars from all over with the NWSISST. And 52% are from what is considered the East Side of the district, and I think that's always a, as we break down the mid of East and West Side schools, we really are a makeup of an East and West Side school. Smarty the Wolf is our mascot, and that is new, just so you know, the kids named him, the kids picked him. I was going for a lion, but whatever. That doesn't matter. So this was voted on and named by scholars, staff, and community. It was kind of a really fun project to work on during the pandemic, right? When there was not a whole lot that could bring us together. We have an artist in the building right now, an artist in residency, Charlie McGlyer, forgot the R there, but he's working with our students and staff this week to write our new school song. So by the end, we will have our new school song as well. Yeah, that was kind of fun. That might be actually one of the facts. But here are our fun facts. We have three 3D printers in the building, K through five, all print and code something. We are focused this year on eight STEM identities, and so we let our students know when they leave here as a STEM student, part of the identities that they will leave here with. There will be a questioner, a creator, a criticator, a problem solver, a collaborator, a collector, an analyzer, and an evaluator. And so our projects that we have, each one has a focus there. Kids earn badges for four of these different things. We have their most valuable player of the month. We focus on one of those a month as well. We have 11 BIPOC licensed and non-licensed teaching staff. We have grown that from when I came in to two. And so that has been exciting and really noticed by, that was one of the things the parents said to me when I said, "I want you to diversify the staff." And so we continue to try, we continue to try to do that. We have one star lab, which is gigantic. I would have loaded it up for you if it wasn't so gigantic, but we, if it's 50 people, it would fit all of you. The cool thing is, it's a star lab, so clearly it's a portable planetarium. But the best thing about it really is, you can be under the ocean, you can be in a cave. It comes with all, like, you know, thousands of lessons in different areas and geographical places in the world, lots of social studies curriculum. So it's pretty cool. All the kids have now been in it at least once. And it's huge, like, it doesn't fit in a library if that goes anywhere. It goes straight into a gym because it's, okay, I really wasn't expecting it, clearly to be that big. It is big. If you were to hike to the lake and back, which our fourth graders do several times throughout every trimester, it's about 1.1 miles. It's a good little hike, our snowshoe, we have snowshoes here. And we have a newly created garden curriculum that we're just starting, so don't judge. And so that's just a little bit about Weaver Lake that you probably wouldn't see just sitting here and talking about it, but hopefully you're excited about it, because we're very excited about it. Four slides, that was it. We are going to, I'm jumping on a plane tomorrow with three of my staff to collect our school excellence. From the Magnet Schools of America.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and thank you for hosting us tonight.
Yeah, lovely.
I'll now ask Superintendent McIntyre for his check-in for this work session.
Well, you caught Lena, that last part, I think through all that, hopefully, what I see is a focus on achievement here, and to get recognized by the Magnet Schools of America is a really big deal, so we're very proud of the work and continuous improvement efforts that are a part of everything that's happening in this building. So it's probably the best part of, we get out and see kind of what's happening at the different sites. I think next month, we're going to go to Willow Lane and see our Early Childhood Special Education Programming there, so hopefully board members are getting a little bit of a flavor of the different, you know, things we're doing in the district. So, Tanya, to kick us off, so we can get right to, Peter Leatherman here has joined us tonight, and we have two agenda items, and that was by design, we really want to make sure we've allowed enough time to answer your questions, have a conversation, and really dig into and study the topics we have tonight. And the first item from, we kind of scheduled it till about 7:20 for the Building a Better Future Phase Two, and then the second item is our strategic direction B vision cards from about 7:20 to about 8 o'clock is kind of the time we allocated to cover those items. So just a little bit of background here, as Peter's here to share with us again the residential brushfire survey results, and I have spent some time here in the last couple weeks, just thinking back to, for some of you board members have been a part of this the whole way, and this goes even back before my time. But this Building a Better Future, you know, we had different names for it, and we, I went back and kind of went through my notes, it was April of 2020 where we, with Barbara Olson's help, kind of landed on Building a Better Future. And in the June 2020 board meeting is when board members that were here, you approved six recommendations at that time that we have, you've honored, you've lived up to those items that we didn't know what the future would bring, and we've been able to stay the course on those. So I just wanted to cover those briefly to set Peter up a bit. The first one was the $9 million addition to Rice Lake. So you approved that in June, and we've already been in that space, right? If you think back to that commitment you made there. But along with that was a number of LTFM projects that John will, you know, talk more about later, and professional development. You approved the professional development for next-generation learning spaces that we're going to talk a lot about tonight. You also supported the combination of using five different funding sources to address facility needs, including voter and board-approved options. So we did a voter-approved option in November, so we were able to accomplish that. You also supported and voted in giving us direction to take additional time to study, that's why Peter's here, to better identify our facility needs. Our study groups came forward with elementary, secondary, recommendations, student services, special ed, community ed, magnet schools, career and tech ed, middle school options, high school options. How do we identify under capacity? So again, your check-in the boxes, we've done that work over the last two years to get us to this point. You supported the reconvening of the Oversight Task Force, because that was done for the Rice Lake addition as well. So that team has now met a series of times, and tonight's the recommendations for that. You also supported that the LTFM work continuum projects be prioritized based on those recommendations. So I cover all this because despite all the other things we've been wrestling with for a couple of years, we have stayed the course on that plan, and now you're at a point to decide, you know, where do we move from here, now that all that work is done, because it took years to kind of study, analyze, pull together, and honestly involve many stakeholders along the way. And so tonight's another example of, along the way, well, one of the recommendations that night was also to create a community engagement and communication plan to inform stakeholders and analyze the current work around community feedback. So the survey tonight helps meet that obligation that you set forth as well. So that's just a little context. John's going to have more as we get into more specific items, but I thought that would be a nice, Peter, you've been with us a handful of times already, probably a half dozen now that, since I've been here, once or twice a year now, so thanks for carving, I know how busy you are, because I know the districts you're working with, and I was surprised we were able to land you tonight for our meeting and not have to pick another night, so thanks for being here. I'll just turn it over to you to get us started.
Super. It's a pleasure to be here with you.
And actually, I got a couple of things to hit.
Oh, do you? Okay. All right. Great.
You took a lot of it, but that's okay. We don't mind.
We're thinking the same way, that's good.
All right. So as Corey stated, the groups that we've had over, since 2020 and on, have spent thousands of hours working on the different aspects that ultimately become Build a Better Future Phase Two, and taking, this is the look at the facilities recommendation. So it's important to know the Oversight Task Force very strongly recommends and endorses these projects, and they are seen as equitable and needs-based in the recommendation for our facilities. One of the strategic priorities that the board has set for us is to focus on safe, welcoming, inclusive environments that foster global curiosity, belonging, innovation, and engagement. These priorities were born out of the desires of our community members for what they want to see from Ossio area schools. During the same timeframe that we were studying, we've been heavily investing in making major facility improvements, using long-term facility maintenance funds to start bringing our buildings up to that next-generation learning standard. This recommendation builds on the work that's already been done. It's an example for LTFM, we've spent $176 million so far, bringing, just in major projects, not the small stuff, just the major projects, making facilities improvements since 2018, with again, that goal of meeting the next-generation learning standard for all of our buildings. Some real quick background as we work our way towards the survey with Peter, the quick timeline, we've seen this a couple of times, this is taking a look at where we transitioned to Oversight Task Force. So in January, the board heard the final recommendations of the study groups and district advisory groups. We've had Oversight Task Force was convened, we had the initial survey information Peter provided us in this, in January. Today, we're at the recommendation, superintendent's recommendation to the school board. If the school board chooses board authorization, that will be step five here, which would then start an information campaign leading to a November 7 vote with another survey, Peter's so glad to hear that, mixed in there, just to take a last brushfire snapshot. This is just a visual representation of the process from the study teams to, we are just, yeah, now wrapped up the Oversight Task Force process and are moving towards that decision of the board process in orange, off to the right. Purpose of Facilities Oversight Task Force is to gather facility recommendations, prioritize facility projects, consider funding strategies, develop timelines, create a plan to collect community feedback, and make comprehensive recommendations regarding our facility planning to the superintendent. The key criteria we used when we were looking at these, now, there is a list of almost 70 projects initially presented, and as a group, we determined that we needed specific criteria to use to consistently evaluate each one of those projects. So these eight categories here represent the criteria that we used. So as you're seeing, what are the pieces that are important to us? Does this have an equitable impact? Is it fiscally responsible? Does it align our district-wide standards? We had to address capacity needs where they existed, the long-term impact or return on investment for our taxpayers. Are we making program improvements? Great example, there is CTE and all the work put into that. Our communication and engagement plan to be able to communicate these, this is what the area that I kind of call the smell test. Are we able to take these projects, put them in front of the public, and they'll say, "That seems viable and reasonable," and like, "It was a needed project." And finally, can we create flexible, adaptable spaces to be able to use within all of our All right, so Peter has graciously come back to us to talk about, again, like I said before, we talked about that initial survey in January, and I will turn it over to him to walk his way through the next one, and I'll drive for you.
You're going to drive for me? All right, perfect. This is a little bit different survey, it's a larger sample size, and we suggest a larger sample size at this point in an off-year election, so that we have a large enough cell size of likely voters. And we're going to look to be able to see where the likely voters are at on the post-test for the potential referendum. So we spoke with 625 residents across the community. Interviews were conducted between March 29th and April 7th. Average interview time was eight minutes. This was a shorter survey, non-response rate 5%, and the predictability going from 400 to 625 is plus or minus 4% in 95 out of 100 cases. No major statistically significant differences in the demographics. Median longevity on this survey comes in right at 15 years, the typical residence lived here. 16% have preschoolers or infants, 33% have children attending the Ossio School District, and then 59% do not have any children whatsoever. So 610 folks in the community really have no day-to-day contact with the district. Median age comes in at about 46 and a half years old, with 25% 18 to 34-year-olds, and 34% over the age of 55. Conservatives and liberals are split, 36% conservative, 37% liberal, with 26% moderate. 58% indicated they were white, 21% African-American, 10% Asian-Pacific Islander, 6% Hispanic-Latino, 4% multi-racial, and 1% Native American. About 1 in 5 indicate that they rent their current residence. The median continues to go up, people just got this round of assessments, so the top of last year's assessments, and that's going to play an impact on property taxes, but it also impacts the home value, that's now seen at over $400,000 as an average. Two factors are driving public opinion on education, well, there's three factors, one's not fully in the light right yet, quite yet. The first one driving people's opinion on public education funding in 2023 is the financial situation of the household. This is a four-part question that asks folks about their income and expenses matching up. Back in January in that survey, I believe you had 48% indicate that they were financially stressed. It's not a statistically significant increase, but now 50% are financially stressed. This continues to grow across the metro area of the state, the norm right now is 55%. To give you an idea, before the pandemic, we were at 28%. At this time last year, we were at about 37%. There are major economic insecurity out there, come in with inflation, cost of living, the stock market, interest rates, all of those things are coming into play, and it's really come to a head now in the first four months in Minnesota. So you're not unique on this one, but it's going to impact people's potential behavior. I always tell clients, just stay on that for one second, John. When the financially stressed, the higher that number gets, what that creates is more people who would support something the district's proposing, but they can't afford to. That's the impact. And when you're talking 2% one way or the other, that can have a major impact on a potential vote. Male/female split 50/50, and then you can see the geographic distribution, Maple Grove 46%, Brooklyn Park 35%. We tested a few perceptions from the January survey because of, we're seeing changes in attitudes and opinions on these things, because the other macro issue we're going to see in a minute is property taxes. The November 15 opening of the property tax statement was a light switch going on for property tax hostility now. It's up about two to three times what it was at this time last year. We're going back to about 15 years ago in public opinion for the level of property tax hostility that we're seeing nowadays. So on a few of these, we're seeing the drops that we expected to. Do you ask voters for a property tax increase only as a last resort? Well, there was just one in November of last year, and so this has dropped now from 77 to 67. Have you spent past referendum funds responsibly? From 79 to 70%, a drop of 9%. If we continue, do you spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? It's a statistically insignificant drop from 72 to 70%. On this one, the threshold, right now, the norm in the metro area is 57%. So you stand up to history and comparable, you're about, you're more than 10 points higher than the norm, on spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. No statistical change, they're proud of the schools and they would recommend them. And then the final statement is really the key one at the outset, because this is the one, we haven't talked about an operating lab year bond referendum, we haven't said $50 a month or $50 a year. The key on this is, the question is, the schools are good investment, and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. What's the core opposition at? How many people disagree in concept to that statement? We do have a statistically significant increase from 23 to 29%. So that's a concern. It is under the threshold, we always want that to be under 30%. Now, statistical tie, but it's under 30% in concept. That's the core opposition. And we're seeing core opposition growing across the metro and across the state on all of these surveys, and it's based really not so much with the district, what's happened, it's property taxes and the economic insecurity. We go to the next chart, you can see, there's no change from the January survey, we now have 49% indicating that their total property taxes are high, the light blue bar, and then 45% average. On the school taxes, 38% indicate that they're high, 4% increase. You can see once again, though, they're not blaming the school district. The high for total taxes is 49, and the high for school taxes is 38. So their animus is focused at city, county, what have you, it's not the school district. That's the good news. The bad news is, is really, you're the only game that has to go out to the taxpayers for a vote on a property tax increase. For the most part, city and counties don't have to do that. And so this is the other macro issue facing the school district. The looming issue in this survey, this question always, right now deserves an asterisk. This question is, the Ossio area schools are adequately funded, yes or no? Right now, 42% say yes, 49% say no, and 9% are unsure. This is before the legislature's done their magic. And more importantly than doing their magic, it's how the victory lap happens. You know, I've mentioned, people, I've talked to people in St. Paul, the impact of the governor coming out and saying that they fully funded education will have a horrible impact on school districts passing any sort of referendums. We saw it in 2021, when he came out and said they gave the largest increase to education funding in the history of Minnesota, and we had renewals that normally would pass 80/20 going by 60/40. Because at that point in time, you know, there were districts in early '21 that had a similar result to this. The governor comes out at the end of June, or whenever the special session ended, said that, and then by election day, they had 78, 80% saying, "Yes, my district's adequately funded." That will impact public opinion also on the adequacy. And there's, you know, there's a whole discussion on education funding, keep in mind, four to five people have no idea the difference between an operating lab year and a bond referendum, okay? It's all a pot of money. They hear a pot of money coming from the state, they expect that you can build buildings and do everything else, and they're also not going to be aware of all the unfunded mandates coming. So these are kind of three macro issues that every school district's going to have to deal with this fall. What's the predisposition at the outset? No change from January. 26% are for any property tax increase, 24% are against all, and then 48% are persuadable. So at the outset, you start out 2% ahead. Key is going to be the 48% indicating they're persuadable. What's the tax tolerance? Well, the 27% say nothing. That's under that threshold, 35% is the threshold. You don't want more than 1 in 3 indicating they're reflexively against any property tax increase. Your folks haven't gotten to the point, even though the property tax has grown up to 49% saying they're high, you're not in a situation of one district this year, where they're at 72% in the very high and somewhat high category, thus they have 44% saying nothing. They can't go. There's nothing that's going to pass in that sort of climate. So you still have a willingness for a discussion here. You have 21% that come in at $4 a month, 20% at $8 a month, and then 21% at $12 a month. You have 21% that come in at $4 a month, 20% at $8 a month, and then 21% at $12 a month. So $8 a month is the median for those willing to accept a property tax increase. Like I told you earlier this year, though, that number's not set in stone. There's elasticity to it. There can also be retraction on that, depending on the components that are being asked. So we went through the list of components again. There's support for all the components as there was, that we saw in January. It's just not as high of support. There has been between a 5- to 8-point drop pretty much across the board in concept for the property tax increase for any purpose. And that's the increase, that's the impact of those macroeconomic issues. Still, it nets out, what nets out at the top, safety and security. It is an insatiable demand that will never be met. Time after time, the unfortunate news that comes out, we can find out that you're never too safe, and people are willing to invest and try to do anything to keep it safe. So from 79%, we dropped down. We basically have six that are in a statistical tie, over 60%. From steam spaces to CTE spaces, specialized service classrooms, repurposing the elementary school, media center libraries, flexible learning spaces, and then we have three in the mid-to-high 50s, expansion of cafeterias, classrooms specifically at Maple Grove High School, and then the new elementary school in Maple Grove at 58%. So when we pull this all together and ask, does it overall sound like a good idea or a bad idea? And that's how basically, 2/3 are saying a good idea. 64% good idea, 30% bad idea. You see, there's not a lot of intensity on this. Only 13% feel strongly, one way or the other, and it's basically 8% good idea and 5% bad idea. There's not a lot of intensity. Overall, folks are saying it's a good idea. Part of it's mitigated by the hesitancy for a property tax increase at this point in time. We always test the sticker shock, and we went back and forth. We tested the big number for a potential total when you include the LTFM. And what we find on this, and it really doesn't matter if we're testing 20 million or 495 million, or whatever the number was in self-wash that I tested. It comes in, because this is an ethereal number, 400 million, 40 million, and all, and we're just testing sticker shock. And it comes in with about 50% of people say, yeah, about 40% say no, and 10% say, I don't know. And so the gauge on this is, does it seem completely out of line for the scope that we're talking about? It falls within the parameters then of what they're thinking sounds reasonable for all the components that we went through. The key is always the tax impact on the person themselves. And so on this referendum, we told them that on a $300,000 home, the tax increase would be $9 a month or $110 a year. On a $400,000 home, it would be $14 or $164. So the median, if the median's about 350, it's about $12 a month, the typical. So it's 50% higher than the norm, or the tax tolerance, but you can see, because there's support for the components, you do have a majority at 57% saying they would support. You have 38% saying they would oppose and 5% are unsure. Once again, though, there's not a lot of intensity. Only 1 in 5 people feel strongly, one way or the other, about this, and it's a statistical tie. And so overall, there's support. Now, I'll come back to it after we do the post-test. Let's look at the reasons for the bond decision. At this point in time, there's been no campaign, so I don't expect need to be a driver on this. But if you do go on election day, need needs to be the number one reason for support. Right now, education's important, children in the district, the cost is reasonable and the need. On the opposition side, 1 in 5 people are either pointing to the cost or the tax impact. 9%, that's a universal constant. Every district has between 8% and 12% that are going to oppose a referendum because of poor spending in the past. 5% have no children, 3% need more information, and only 1% say this isn't needed. So the 10% that say, making a choice on need, it's 9 to 1 netting out that this is needed. We tested seven arguments, and basically, one sticks out. And the one that is, not surprisingly, the most impactful, is current safety, security, and academic needs are prompting the need to update and modernize facilities. 49% indicate it makes them much more likely to support. 72% say it makes them more likely overall. The other six arguments basically operate in an echo chamber. They already support. The safety and security has the possibility to move approximately 6% as an argument. So how much money goes into safety and security in the total referendum package will be key for residents to understand. On the reasons for opposition, there are two that they list, and they're not surprising. It's what we're seeing out everywhere. The most impactful, with 63% indicating it could impact their vote, is with inflation and the cost of living increase, many cannot afford a property tax increase. The other one is the property taxes are going up too quickly, and homeowners just can't afford additional taxes for education. Both of those items impact the soft support. That pulls in those macro issues that we're talking about. The other three, the state and federal government is adequately funded, funding is adequate, and the potential increase from the legislature at this point in time. If you oppose, those are effective arguments in your opposition, okay? So the macro playing out is the inflation and property taxes. So when we come back to that and test the whole package, there's really no statistically significant change. We have 57% that support, 37% oppose, and 6% are unsure. Now, in pulling out the likely voters, and by likely voters, they had to tell us that they were registered to vote, that they always voted, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, in past elections, and that they were absolutely certain to vote in the November election. So voting always has a halo impact. People don't want to admit that they don't recycle or that they don't vote. So it's a little bit higher, but it projects out to about 34% fell into that category. Probably a little bit on the high side, probably, it's probably turnout would be about 30%. The good news is, it's not statistically significant, but support doesn't drop amongst likely voters. It goes up a tick from 6, from 57 to 60%. Opposition goes from 37 to 32%. So at this point in time, there's also, though, not a lot of intensity amongst likely voters. That's unusual, because right now, likely voters are more likely to be parents in this profile of likely voters. They've been hearing about this more often than the general public. So part of the lack of intensity, though, is you have more parents indicating they're financially insecure than non-parents, okay? So that goes back to that initial statement I made. When the number goes up, you have more people that would support that can't afford to support. And then just a couple questions. Communications, 84% rated the communications favorably a few months ago, 79% rate them favorably now, statistically insignificant change. Norm on this is about 67, 68%. The grapevine is now tied as the number-one source of information for people in the district. And if we, 21% get their information from word of mouth, 21% the website, 18% mailings, 13% the local newspaper. This might be a bias. I consider social media grapevine also, so that would be 31% if we added to it. 9% email, continuing down the list. How do people prefer to receive information? Well, this one, if we look at it print versus electronic, it's pretty much, you have 25% saying newsletters and mailings, 14% local newspaper, about 37% want something in their hand. At the same time, we have about 40% that prefer electronic, whether website, email, social media. And then you do have 1 in 7, and this is how folks have become very comfortable with getting their information via gossip. It used to be, especially in the metro area, we never would have 1 in 7 people admit that I would prefer to get my information from word of mouth. That's very much outstate Minnesota, small-town Minnesota. But what we continue to see in this is, the local newspaper, as they go out of business or they don't cover school districts like they used to, especially in the metro area, especially over 55-year-old men are relying on the grapevine like young mothers in ECFE, because that source of information's been taken away from them, and they're not gonna go click on a website to find out what's going on. They don't really have that need, so they're going to rely on the grapevine. And that's why this grapevine explosion, or since the pandemic, has happened. We see it specifically in that demographic. So that's the survey results. I would say overall, the project will pass or fail, for the most part, it's going to be out of your hands. It's going to be, what's the economy doing in November? Where are people at as far as their economic situation? And how does the messaging come out of St. Paul? That is every district that's going to make a decision. I see no reason not to try to go, realizing that those factors are completely out of your control at this point in time. You know, the question is, if you don't go, wait till 2024? Nobody wants to be on the ballot in 2024, so that would put out anything until 2025 as a possibility. You're in better shape than many of my clients at this point in time. I've told a few districts, you can't go. I've told many districts, you have to completely change or back, back way down from what you're asking for. You're really not in that, you know, if you nudge it down from 12 to 8, or whatever you can do to help mitigate the tax impact, that would be helpful. But then also, the key is gonna be to drive and make people understand the importance and tell the whole story of what this is gonna do for the future of the district. Kind of is Corey and John, I think, set up, kind of the historical perspective of crossing the finish line of the building and then the operating portion of the district's planning. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I mean, I don't really have any questions. I just have concerns about moving forward, just from speaking with community members.
Maybe that we, as we kind of get to the second section, that'd be a good thing to discuss after.
Okay.
Peter, how about, you tested 400 million, and I think we're gonna be more like 250 or less. So do the numbers, in your mind, change at all if they ask, is not 400 on a ballot, but more like half that?
It'll help a little bit with the sticker shock, but it's not gonna, it's not going to change because the tax impact was based on, my understanding, what the 200, I think at that time was 250 million, because the numbers were kind of fluid from elders and everything like that. So that is what people react to. How much does it cost me?
And we, when we asked Peter to test, we asked him to test what we thought was worst-case scenario. So the actual numbers and the recommendation are less than that. As Corey said, what the bond question would ask is approximately 225 million and about a $7 a month impact on the average house. So that's, that's the most recent numbers we have, that we didn't even have a few days ago when we talked to you last week.
And do you know where property taxes increased, or amount of that? Did it, did property tax increase across the entire district?
I don't know for this district as a whole, but I mean, Hennepin County had the largest assessment.
Okay. So when you talk about property taxes, you're talking about the threat or the fear of, but not the actual property tax? Does that happen within the district?
No, no, this is actual. This is, this is what happened last year. There were a large majority of people that, when they saw their assessment last spring, were very excited that their house was valued that much more. And they opened up their property tax statement on November 15th, and it was like a light switch flipped on. They never thought of the connection between higher property values and what it was going to do for my property taxes. The other thing in play now, too, is a lot of people have gotten the new assessment for next year's taxes. Now they know the link. So they already, they saw them go up, they have the knowledge now that with the increase in assessment, that it's going to go up again. And so it creates this, this is reacting to actual.
So it just explains to me, property taxes are assessed at the county level and not at the local level?
This, Maple Grove had a community center referendum that passed. Brooklyn Park, I don't think had anything on their ballot. Hennepin County went up, and then ours went up. So those are the components that went up, folks.
But Maple Grove is a sales tax, it's not a property tax.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
And gentlemen, we talked about, well, maybe you, can you just frame up again with the growth in our communities, that counters a little bit of that, because it spreads the tax out across?
So as an example, when we, when we did our September levy last year, I think the increase was roughly 13%, but the district grew in property value by 6.7%. What that did, that growth essentially mitigates a lot of the increase in the taxes. So our actual taxpayers saw a $1 to $3 increase in their taxes if their house stayed the same, because the growth was so much. Elers is already projecting our growth at 8% for this coming year, so even with some of these increases of inflation, we should see that spread out, as you know, you keep seeing more new houses come in, more new businesses come in, the tax base spreads across it. That's one of the benefits of having a property wealthy district as a whole, is we're spreading that out a little bit so we can mitigate those increases because it spreads to people. So it's not as much of an impact as, say, a bedroom community that only has residential, and they need to go out for this kind of a question. They're gonna take a much larger hit directly to residential property taxpayers. So we're not in that situation, which is a benefit for us.
To give you an idea, the highest amount I've tested on the average home this year so far is $60 a month on the average house. For an operating levy and a bond referendum, $370 million, that's the difference in being a property-rich district.
I think it's just important to add that a lot of our community members saw massive increases to their property values. I know in certain pockets of our community, we're talking like $100,000 or more increases to their property values, which, you know, even if we had a completely flat tax, that's a huge tax impact for them.
Then that's what's impacting people's perceptions.
Right, right.
Any other?
Yeah, two other things I'd love Peter to weigh in on as I'm listening to you. So we've said this many times on the board here, I think by the end of the night, we're looking for some direction, and I just believe if it's not a 6-0 support, we won't even bring it forward to you for action, because I think we can't successfully pass this if it's not 6-0. And you have experience with districts, when it's not 6-0 or when it is, that's advice you've always given us, so I want to open that again to see if that's still true, or are you seeing it differently?
The research bears it out, that the district that's not unanimous, whether it's 6-0 or 7-0 or 6-1, one no vote decreases the chance of success by about a third. Two no votes, it's over 70% will fail. I had a district over in Wisconsin, two districts that just went this past April over in Milwaukee area. One was a unanimous board, one had one dissenting vote. It was a high school district with the elementary school district that fed into the high school. The elementary school district was a unanimous board. It passed about 60/40. The high school district, there was one no vote on it, and it failed 45/55. Basically, the same feeder system in, but that one vote, when that happened, is to signal that if the board doesn't agree on it, because what drives people to support is need. If the board doesn't see the need, then the community doesn't see the need. It's that signal. So that's the item in play. Yeah, I tell everybody, if you're not unanimous, because I don't believe in dress rehearsals. Dress rehearsals take a lot of effort, a lot of time, and a lot of money. Don't waste your time.
Can you speak a little bit about the risk of waiting to 2024 or 2025 in terms of, not in terms of our planning, but just in terms of the survey politics of it?
Well, yeah. One superintendent, and this applies, surveys are snapshots in time, okay? One superintendent asked me, if I'm gonna go the first Tuesday in November, when's the best time to do a survey? I said, the Monday before the Tuesday, okay? That's when you're gonna get the most accurate snapshot in time, because everything is so fluid. 2024, we know obviously, it is going to be drummed out at a federal level with the presidential race. It makes it hard to get the message out there, at the communication portion. Basically, everybody votes. I'm sure in 2020, it was 80, 85% turnout in the district, so everybody votes. A surprise voter who walks in and says, here's a bond referendum saying it's gonna increase my taxes, is a no voter. So, the communication challenge to get through is more difficult in that sense. 2025, not knowing what happens in 2024, is light years away as far as public opinion. It's just going to be, I mean, November of 2024 is going to be difficult. That's not to preclude spring of 2024. It is, it is a possibility. Some districts go for bond referendums in the spring, you know, for planning and building processes and everything like that. But, most districts, and I think that's why so many are in the situation of considering a referendum this fall. I've never done more surveys for folks than I've done this year, and doing this in 30 years, because everybody is anticipating and trying to avoid 2024. The unfortunate thing is, some of them might try and fail because of that macroeconomics happening right now.
And I'd maybe add to that, each year you wait, or each year we wait, you're slowing down the pace of achieving the mission, vision, and strategic directions that you've set as a board, because those learning environments matter for results. And then the other part that I would, curious if you have any perspective on, we're going to have to do boundary changes at some point regardless of this. So, we either do them tied to changes with some improvements to buildings and the things that we're proposing tonight, or if those wait, then we're making boundary changes just because we have to balance on enrollment. You've studied this, surveyed, you know, I feel like the second is way more painful for parents, then boundary changes are coming because there's a new school and there's changes to each facility across the district. Those things, I think, help. Boundary changes are hard no matter what, haven't been through it. So, we're going to have to do that regardless at some point after studying those, those things. And I know we have an ECHMAC, you're going to get into that a little bit more maybe later, John, but curious, as you studied that issue of boundaries and things like that, what you'd say?
Yeah, I, I mean, boundary changes, with, when you have new schools or a school coming online, you know, people don't necessarily think, okay, this is going to make boundary changes happen. But, when you do them, it makes sense that you have to do them. I've also seen, though, for the most part, when boundary changes are in play, especially in a large, I think back to Anoka, Hennepin, and 20, with those two new schools, the boundary changes that impacted that were pretty minimal, because they were targeted in the areas where districts have the most problems is, without a new school, you're rebalancing across the whole. So, there's more impact on the, the boundary changes would be, from what I've seen. I don't know if that's the case here, but it seems to help be mitigated if it's like one school, you're trying to adjust the boundary for impacting not as many people, not having, you know, like Elk River School District years ago, where if it failed, you know, kids from Zimmerman were coming to Elk River, and Elk River kids were going to Rogers, and a vision like that. I mean, that was just a disaster. So, I don't know how that impacts it, but it's usually easier to manage from what I've seen.
Any other questions in that portion? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Okay. So, moving on, we're going to get into a little bit more detail regarding the actual recommendation. The recommendation really comes in two main parts. The group's recommending that, based on the information that has been gathered, studied and evaluated, the school board, we would recommend the school board authorize a referendum to ask our community to approve a building bond for school facilities on November 7th. And with that, we would also recommend that the board approve an adjusted long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan to complement, to complete complementary projects sooner and to maximize the positive impact on our students. And then always, with that, we would also save long-term expense by being able to combine projects when we're already in a building. So, as we look at the summary of, and this, this is the, the big summary of the projects, with in your packet is the detail that lists the full, I think, 60-some individual projects that are called out. So, the, the main projects that we're looking at start with improved safety and security at all schools. Specifics here include secure entrances at the high schools. So, today, we need a secure entrance at Maple Grove Senior, we need a secure entrance at Oseo. Park Center has a secure entrance, but it's not their busiest entrance, so we need to improve that side as well, so we have that on both sides, so it makes more sense that way. And then also, looking at some overall security improvements at all locations, just to make sure that our buildings are, you know, we, we can manage our buildings and secure our facilities to the best of our ability, so that our staff feels safe and have that safe welcoming piece of the strategic plan that we're trying to achieve. Next main area is expand and modernize career and technical education spaces at the three senior high schools. Expand and modernize science, technology, engineering, arts, and math STEAM spaces at magnet schools. Update classrooms and common spaces with modernized furniture, flexible learning areas at all schools, and update classrooms for specialized learning services, including special education, gifted and talented, and English learners. As we move on, modernize library media centers at all locations, add outdoor classrooms at elementary and middle schools, and specifically, you're looking at ones that don't already have this. Repurpose an existing elementary school to meet community education program needs, including early childhood learning, adult basic ed, and enrichment opportunities, birth through adult. The reason that we are recommending, we recommend opting to repurpose a school rather than just close and sell a school, is to keep our options open. Number one, we have a very heavy need as community ads programs are coming back fully online, and also the growth in, that we're seeing in those programs, and want to be able to continue to do that and offer it, to be able to meet all the needs that our community has shown that they would like to have. But we'd also like to keep that building, because enrollment is cyclical. And the example I'd give you is, is we've done this once before, and I think I mentioned this once. In 2000, the district made the decision to take an elementary school and repurpose it in an early child special ed, that's Willow Lane. And at the same time, we had a capacity need on the north side of Brooklyn Park, made the decision also to expand, add a brand-new school, which is Woodland. So, similar need, we still have EC, early childhood special ed at Willow, along with ABE, along with ECFE, and I'm sure I'm missing a program in there, but we, we have jammed that building so full that we can't necessarily do all the things that we need to there. So, ECSEs had to spill out into other areas in order for them to be able to serve their purposes and meet the needs of the students correctly. So, looking at this option to do another repurpose balances that allows all those pieces back together, you're building in a lot of efficiencies for the programs to be able to have all the ECSE staff together in one place, a lot of the complementary programs for special, or excuse me, for community ed together in one place in a repurposed building. Next area is adding classrooms and a larger cafeteria onto Maple Grove Senior High School for capacity reasons, and add an elementary school in northwest Maple Grove. And as Corey mentioned, ECHMAC's been looking at this for six-plus years. That, and the need for that expansion to Maple Grove Senior High, which is today about 150 kids over capacity, and by current projections, will be between 250 and 300 kids over projections by, over capacity by 2028. So, there's definitely a need there. It's the only building that today is over capacity. Fernbrook will be over capacity next year. We expect by fall, there'll be probably 50 to 60 kids over capacity. One of the things to keep in mind, that unlike some of our neighboring districts, the example I'd give you is like a Robinsdale or Minneapolis, our district is not built out. We still have available space, we still have farmland. If you go out to Hennepin County and actually look at who owns that land, about 80% of it is owned by home developers. So, they've already made the purchases from the farms, they're renting back to the farmers to let them still farm it until they're ready to make their proposals. And about every month or so, we see multiple proposals start coming into the different cities that we represent in that area with options to start adding more and more development. So, the, as we're projecting, we're projecting that it's going to take one more elementary school to, to meet the need of where our district would finally be when it was built up. And it's important to note that as a district matures, it goes through this cycle process. So, you're going to build out all your space available, with that, your enrollment's going to grow as new families move in to fill those spaces. The students mature and move through our system, eventually graduating out and ultimately leaving empty nester parents in their homes, where they tend to stay for a little while, and that goes to what Peter said, where, you know, 60% of our residents don't have children in the system. They, they fit that mold of either pre-children or empty nesters. When they finally decide to move out of our district, or downsize, or do something, new families move in. And that's where we come off the decline, and we start to see a little steady piece, and, and the climb starts, and we go through that cycle again. As a district, because of our size, we're in two different places in the cycle, depending on where you are in the district. East side of our district has a higher proportion of homes that have aged out. Those children have already gone through our system, yet their, their parents are still living there, or else they're really, really young, and they're in that in-between phase, where Maple Grove has a higher portion of families and children with kids in, in our system today, and they're on that, that upside. So, so we're having to balance the, the wave on both sides at the same time. And that's what is bringing in this need for that additional elementary school in, northwest Maple Grove. So, we wanted to show you what some of these proposals look like, so you get an idea. Now, these are just different schools, and some of them are even our own, but recommendations. So, if you're looking at what do next-generation learning spaces look like at an elementary perspective, this is just to give a visual of what some of those spaces can look like. So, here's elementary, and you have a variety here of some flex spaces, some media center spaces, and even, yeah, just combinations of those things. Obviously, with the addition to Rice Lake, we have our own next-generation learning center example. The feedback that we've received from staff so far, we've been, had a year or so now to work in Rice Lake, has been tremendously positive about the ability to be able to use this, to be able to use that flex lab that is, is there, the breakout spaces that are available. The concerns with there being so much glass and so much learning on display have been mitigated, as people realize, after going through that process, that the distractions from students ends up being a lot less than what you think. You actually create some resilience from students, because they're used to there being motion and things around them, they focus a little bit more. At least, that's the feedback that we received initially. So, very positive. The last slide is looking at some next-generation learning in secondary, so you're looking at some cafeteria spaces, flexible spaces, media center. I forget which one, one of these pictures is Oseo. Oseo Senior, you probably know better than I would, Kelly, but I think it might be the lower right.
Yeah.
So, some of our own spaces, where we've already done some of the flex and then other areas. So, we, we talked very briefly about attendance boundaries, and we wanted to note that, that no matter what happens, it's going to be part of the process. So, if we move forward with an election, if an election is successful, attendance boundary changes will happen primarily at the elementary and middle school levels with various set parameters. And when we say parameters, what you're saying is, we want to keep as many neighborhood kids within their own, close to their neighborhood school as possible, so we're not busing a chunk of kids disconnected from the rest of the boundary of that district or that school. We're not doing that bounce in of a disconnected group. We're trying to minimize those bus times. When you have that, that disconnected area and you move it, that tends to be a lot longer bus time, which almost always leads to behavioral issues, because we are putting kids on a bus for so long. Also leads to a lot more costs with transportation. So, those are the parameters, and typically with the community study and survey and, that we would go through, we, we work together with the community to determine what are those parameters that are important to you. So, with the approvals, that's, we can pretty much say we can stick to elementary and middle. If this is not approved, or the option is to not move forward, we will need to change attendance boundaries at all levels. As I said, Maple Grove Senior is already over capacity. Middle schools, both Oseo Middle and Maple Grove Middle will go over capacity, so we have to make changes there. And then obviously, a whole bunch with middle schools, too, as we try to shift where the growth is, to move everybody. It's like Peter said, you're not making small changes to a couple schools to make it work, you're making wholesale changes to almost everybody. And that tends to be a, a bad message to have to try to share. Some additional notes, it has been more than 20 years since we have asked voters to invest in our facilities. Very important fact. The tax information, as I said before, was based initially on $250 million. Current estimates are, actually, even the updated number I got this morning, is, is going to be in that 220 to 225 range. We did talk with Ellers, and they feel very confident that we can hit $7 a month for 220, to do all of these projects. Now, that includes embedding our, our long-term facility maintenance plan that we already submit to the school board on an annual basis. It's all those pieces combined together to be complementary, that we feel we can do on a, what the voters would see as a $225 million bond question and a $7 tax impact per month. Next steps in the process. After questions and in, and feedback from board today, assuming we are moving forward, we will bring the, an action item for the board to approve on Tuesday next week, that would be moving forward with the bond referendum. Authorities submit review and comments to the Minnesota Department of Education for approval, which is a required step with any building process that we have to do. With that, also later in the process comes a public, the, giving the public an opportunity to comment on the, on the results of the review and comment. That's just, would happen probably in September. And then finally, we would prepare and start the informational campaign. Now, much like last year's referendum, we kind of authorized it in two steps. We did the first one because we had estimates and didn't have our hard number yet, we're still working on that. So, we're going to do a similar thing. We're asking that the board next week, assuming, again, we get that positive information here to move forward, that you authorize us to start this process. It will become a public campaign. The information will be out before we get to June 20th for the formal approval. So, June 20th, you're approving the exact dollar amount and the ballot language. So, there'll be the full resolutions associated with that, and that also ties in nicely with that, is also when we would approve the new 10-year LTFM plan that ties those two pieces together. That's a lot of information. I am happy to take any questions, and we have some other people here that have been in the process. I would like to take the opportunity to specifically thank the members of the Oversight Task Force, who put a lot of work into this, to try to bet and go through, like I said, 70-plus different projects to see, are these the needs of our district, and do these fit for strategic plan and what we're trying to do long-term? So, thank you to the entire group, a lot of the members are here, but just wanted to say thank you to that.
John, quickly on that, and maybe, Tanya, you were a part of the committee, too. It was raised earlier, need versus want. I think you wrestled with that, and I think it's important, if you can talk more about that, and how the Oversight Task Force wrestled with identifying needs versus wants, right?
Yeah, as John said, you know, we had the criteria, we had numerous exercises from the very beginning of identifying, categorizing things into needs and wants, and some things did drop out over time, that was not in a need category. And then went through and did the ranking, we talked about every single item rigorously, had different members of the committee weigh in and provide information context. It was very in-depth discussion, like pressure testing each of the items, is, what is this really used for, how will this really benefit, the outcomes? So, from my experience, that, you know, and I've been on this Oversight Committee since its beginning, as you mentioned, from the beginning of the journey, 60 years, well, in my case, four years ago, but it's, it's been a very thorough, rigorous process. So, Kim and Steve, I don't know if you'd add anything more to that?
No, I think, I think you hit it right on the head, is that it was rigorous. I think that criteria really helped us stay focused on what the needs were of every building that has been impacted. And so, yeah, it was a pretty rigorous process, and we continued to have great discussions about needs versus wants, and then go back to the criteria and reflect on the criteria again, so it kept us really centered on the importance of that, that criteria to make decisions.
And also bringing forward, I think, a recommendation that supports some improvements at each and every site in the school district, I think is important. You know, there are certainly things, in my opinion, that are going to stand out, like, oh, this building's getting a little more. I think that would be true to say that, but I think it's also true that what the team brought forward was that there would be one or, well, one to three improvements, pretty much, at each, five, well, five, okay.
We're up to a minimum of five at every site.
Yeah, so I think that's important, you know, that I thought was good that came out of the task force as well, in addition to the needs and wants projects, so. out of the task force as well, in addition to the needs and wants projects, so.
Well, and with that, it certainly was not, it was still, except, there were some, there are some buildings who are going to have more because of the need. So we know the capacity issues, we know the requirements. So, you know, while we did, we did look and understand what are all the needs, and ensure that needs are being met across every school, it was not a peanut butter approach by any means, right? It was very targeted, very specific. And so that's why, when we land, it's going to be, everybody does have the opportunity to have improvements made, but there, but there also that needs piece to really address the critical issues that we need to address.
If I could add one thing, and that would be, you know, the price points on some of the things that are happening at the middle and the high school levels are significant. And it's important for me, as an elementary principal, I'm like, what is my site going to get, right? That's my perspective. But to realize also, my students, our scholars are going to be middles and high school students. So we have to think about it by sites, maybe, but also by what's the student experience as they move through our system.
Another piece that we looked at, because for me, I asked a lot of questions about, you know, now. Why now? Should this be one year from now, two years from now, kind of testing what we kind of heard in terms of, there's the voter piece, there's the ability of the taxpayer to bear the cost of it, but our job as board members is to look at the information and say, is this the need? Is this reflective of the need that we have? And is this the right timing to meet those needs? So I think those are two pieces, but our job as a board is to determine, is this the need to bring to the taxpayers, and then let the taxpayers decide if they will approve it or not? Now, of course, with that meaningful information, we can't be, we would never put it out if we knew it wasn't supported, like Peter talked about. But I think those are two kind of very different questions to ask ourselves as we kind of go through this process of discussion. So we looked at, what would the cost be now versus a year from now, and versus two years from now? And that is significant. So not only is it that do we have the need now for these improvements, but also the cost of potentially waiting. So that was part of the process as well.
Question along the needs, I think, John, you've mentioned this before, thinking about the capacity space. So, you know, should you go forward with it, and we're going to add a new elementary, it's not like the elementary school opens next year. So we've got capacity issues, and from the time that it gets passed, it's a year and a half, two years until?
Three. Almost three. So with a vote in November, it's just under three. So in order to take an elementary school, and it's one of the reasons why we were debating that same question that Peter asked, is it something that you wait till spring? We wait till spring, we add a year to the elementary, because it would open partway through the year, it wouldn't be available. But we don't typically want to transition kids to a different building mid-year. So it, the design development process, so once, once you get approval, it's not just, hey, we already have blueprints and we're set and ready to go. We sit down and we start having conversations with the community, and with what's called the user groups, to ultimately put together what do our teachers want, who are teaching first grade, second grade, kindergarten, all those components, special education, what should the media center look like? And we start asking all those questions, and gathering that information from all those groups, led by our architectural firm, who starts putting that together to make sure, okay, what do we want in this building? What's the learning model going to be there? Is it going to be different than the building we're sitting in today? With building brand-new, we have the opportunity to try something different, if something different exists, we can go the same route. We have lots of options. So it's, explore those options, figure out what people want, and what direction we want to go. And then the architects say, they make that into a shape, and say, this is what we think it's going to be. The group comes back, they sign off on it, say, yep, that's the school we want you to build. That process takes about three months. Then it takes another four months to actually draw out everything from a construction standpoint to say, here's how to build this from dirt all the way up to a completed school. Once we get construction documents, then there's a multi, a couple of months for a bid process, and then you start. So typically, if November of '24, or November of '23 approves it, roughly November, December of '24 is when dirt would actually move, and we would start working on it, and that's about 18 months from there. We want to take over the building around the end of school, so we have the summer, because they give us an empty-walled building, and we need to put in the technology, and bring in the furniture, and make it a home, make it the school the way it's supposed to be, not just walls. So we do that process over the summer. And in-between, as you're approaching it, that's where you take that other step of professional development with the teaching staff selected for that building, and the leadership staff to determine, okay, what's different? How are we going to teach in these? And they start making it their own, and make it fit their community. So it's a process. The high school addition is somewhat similar, although it'll be phased a little bit differently. One of the advantages there, again, we have a big design time, but we can start constructing on the outside of the building, and work from the outside in to where we connect, so we only connect and do work that would be disruptive in the summer. So we're not messing with classes. But it'll probably take a couple of years to get through that whole process, along with design. So most of those cases, you're looking at the summer of '26, to maybe even for the middle, elementary, and maybe the summer of '20, or fall of '27 for a high school, to be, those two, those two main projects to be completed. Now, that's the expansion projects. The ones in the other buildings, number one, we can move a lot faster, because we just have the ability, we already have floor plans, we already have basic, it's a lot easier designed to get in and get started. And we've already, proactively, as an example, we've gone through the basic user group process with Brooklyn Middle School to identify what their needs are. We already have a general layout of what that's going to look like, and are getting close to the point of where we would sign off on it. So construction documents and what we want to change can go into process, and then we'll start working our way out. With the idea that most of that process is really driven on long-term facility maintenance. So we don't need to wait for a vote to do what we're going to do there. It's a complimentary piece. It goes well, and we wanted to get in and get started. So summer, next summer, we can be working immediately on these specific improvements that you're seeing in this recommendation for that school first, and the others stage in with it.
And John, I have a question. Can you help me understand the two different scenarios of a timeline with boundary changes? When that would be, you know, a tangible difference for?
Well, okay, so with an, with approval, and we know that now your boundary changes are really tied to when does that elementary school open? That's the primary difference. If we're going to repurpose a building, it's on the other side of town, it's a little bit of a different conversation. But again, where does that fit in the grand scope of when do we need to go in and do construction where we would want to make that change? But the new elementary drives everything, and when we're going to need to move students to populate that school and provide the relief to Fernburg right now, that has the big difference. If you don't, if it doesn't pass, or doesn't get approved, you know, as I said, Fernburg will go over capacity next year. So almost, I would think then we would almost immediately be looking at making at least temporary boundary changes to provide relief to Fernburg, and starting to have that conversation about Maple Grove Senior, pretty much, next year. And then those changes just begin, okay, well, we have to push east, because that's where we have capacity, which means we push the westernmost ones east, and then the next layer east, until we get enough capacity. We just keep pushing. So that affects a ton of people.
Everybody.
I mean, realistically, you could, until you get to the, you know, Palmer Lake might not change, but all the, you know, 16 elementary schools could change in the process. So I'm not trying to scare people with it, it's just an ugly way, because it affects so many people. We're asking so many people to accept the change.
Can I just ask you to expand a little bit, specifically on the parameters that would or would not be implemented, depending on whether we move forward with going for a bond or not, on boundary changes?
Boundary change parameters really come out of a community discussion, and Kay, maybe you can help me with this, because you've gone through it much more recently than I have.
Oh, similar to how with the facilities task force, right, we have that criteria, like you would work together as a group to determine what those parameters are being. It might be very specific as to time on the bus, or kind of like how far geographically away, but we would set those, in that community group, set those parameters. But it would be very much, people would be involved. I did want to add too, for this specifically, when we're talking about facilities, we had community members involved, staff members involved, families involved throughout this process, going back as far as to our strategic plan, right? And then the six study groups that looked at these things as well, but very much involved community members in this process.
So just to clarify, regardless of when a boundary change would occur, there would be communities involved in that process and the decision-making as we create parameters before we implement a boundary change?
Yep, the parameters need to be created first.
But they may not be adhered to if we are unable to secure a bond?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, correct.
And was there mention of whether community involvement has been up to this point?
Are you talking specifically? I mean, as you're looking, there's, the example I'll give you is ECMAC, that's one of the district advisory committees, has about 30 community members that are in an annual process. We actually just had the last meeting yesterday, and they'll, they present, or we present their findings, final report next week as well. Although the last two have looked very, very similar, because we haven't been able to act on it. We're looking at it right now, a lot of the pieces are here. So that's an example. RE/MAX is another example, that has a lot of community members, and especially safety sites, we have a lot of police officers and SROs, and then city community members also involved on that side. Some of the other, the study groups that also went into that, you mean, CTE groups have a lot?
Students were involved in the CTE groups. And then we also took the CTE-related questions from a prior Peter Leatherman survey, and extrapolated that data as well. But we specifically focused on students at the high schools for the career strands, and then for?
Yeah, thinking back to, yeah, the next-generation learning spaces. Yeah, working with staff, also with DEPAC, looking at, getting their recommendations way back in, what, January 20, 20, I think it was.
Yeah, it was right before the pay. Right, yeah, right at December 19th, we passed, and then went to DEPAC, and then we all went.
We've gone all the way back to my first year, and we were, we had a lot of stakeholders involved in the strategic planning process. The themes that carried through, this is how do we match facilities to the desired daily experience that we collected from student-staff-community, all the way back to fall and winter of 2019?
Yeah.
Because that's what's inherent in the strategic plan, and we're trying to align this to that. I did want to mention, too, thanks to the Physical Oversight Task Force for, when we were in January at the work session, there was about $400 million, you know, of recommendations there, and for this group to get that to the, here's the 200 and 50, 200 to 250 million dollars of projects that we need, either need or have to by law, go to bond, ask for it, and the rest to Dale and the team to say, here's how we can rebuild that puzzle on LTFM, and take the remainder and kind of prioritize those as you implement that plan. That's a, that gets it down to that $7 arena, versus, you know, we heard Peter say 12, anything over eight's probably not, we shouldn't be thinking about that, right? So good, we're getting it down to, like, here's a plan that we could at least hit that target, where we think, to his point, I think he ended with, there's a reason you couldn't go out, just these are the things that are happening in the, in the world that are going to ebb and flow every day. So with that, I'm kind of curious, kind of back, Tanya, to your question, you know, what questions the board members have, or what additional information do we need? We've given you a lot since January, and even, I'm going back to those CTE presentations over the last two years, all the LTFM presentations. There's so much in play, and you can see that we're trying to time it, we're trying to time it out, so it all comes together. But it is a lot, I mean, we've all had to dust off our memories on some things. Because ultimately, that helps us decide what direction to go in, and whether we at least put an action item in front of you next week at the board meeting. And the reason we picked that time is like, before we learned to have any chance at a campaign, getting information out about six weeks before school ends really helps, versus starting in September. And Kay can speak to that more, but, you know, that's why we, if we're going to go, it gives us the best chance of success.
Yeah, we want to at least mention the fact, before school ends, that this is on the horizon. It's not going to be, you probably remember at this time last year, we were kind of already in the midst of it, it's not going to be as long as last year, but we do want to make sure that we connect with people before school ends, because summers, people are out doing their thing, right? They're not paying attention to necessarily what's going on in our schools. So we want to make sure to connect with them, and then really put us, obviously, another strong push in the fall as well. But definitely want to connect before school's on.
Before I forget, because it's come on, you know, out of my mind a couple of times. I know Jackie and Thomas couldn't make it, I think Jackie had something, and we've had conversations with Thomas already this week, knowing he couldn't be here.
Yeah. Yeah, so to that end, so in terms of understanding board member support, or what we need, so Jackie shared with me her statement, and again, she's very disappointed to be missing this work session, where we're discussing the possible exciting opportunities for our scholars and staff that the bond would provide. She's also disappointed to be here, to not be here for the initial presentation of the scorecard for Direction B. And she said, I'm missing because my father's having a 12-hour cancer surgeries today, so do keep her in your thoughts and on your heart. I faith that my colleagues will consider all information diligently, as they always do, and that our amazing 270-side staff will be presenting some well-thought-out, well-thought-out, and well-analyzed data. I've reviewed all of the material and have had my questions answered by district staff. I am supportive of the bond recommendation, and excited about the scorecard, that's another part of our meeting. And so for me, you know, I have had the unique opportunity of being present throughout this entire process, and asking a lot of questions. And for me, I do feel that this is very needed, I feel the work to get that from that larger number down to this number. Having reviewed all of the items in it, for me, I think this is necessary, I think it is necessary now, and I think it's beneficial for us to actually achieve the strategic plan that we set forward. So whenever we make decisions about where we're going as a district, and the strategy we're setting, the resources have to accompany it. And there's things in here that are required for capacity, and there's things that align with what we said we needed for the performance and outcomes for our scholars. So for me, I have arrived at that place where I'm supportive of moving forward with this at this time.
I also am supportive, I just want to say that from the get-go, I am unequivocally supportive. I actually feel like we're a little bit behind the game on this, I feel like we probably should have asked sooner. But I also have concerns, yeah, I know, right? Really, because really, we have been talking about this growth and what's been going on since before COVID, but really, every, all the work that we were doing really kind of got put on hold there. But I also do have questions and concerns, mostly concerns, actually, I don't really have a lot of questions. You guys have provided really excellent information, lots of data, and obviously poured a ton of work into determining how we were going to go about this. But the concerns I feel like I have to bring up really are for the benefit of our constituents, our community members, our students and families, and what their experiences are going to be, and primarily around our information campaign. I also want to clarify that I have no doubt that Kay is going to do an excellent job, like, no doubts about that. I just want to make sure that we address certain things. You know, I know that there's going to be a huge perception issue around asking for this money, when we just, you know, so that's a concern that I have, is making sure that we are careful about how we approach that, and that, again, like Peter said, and everybody has really said, that we make sure that we're being specific about why this is a need, and how it will benefit all students in the district, not just specific school sites.
So why again, why now?
Yes, why again, why now? Like, I just want to really, really make sure that gets home. Also, making sure that our students and families, particularly at our sites that are over capacity or about to be over capacity, are well-aware of what our intention is before the end of the school year. I've already received, as a board, we've received a handful, but I've received lots and lots of communication around parents who are very concerned about class sizes for next year. So if we can ease that burden for them by making sure that they know that we're proactively approaching this already, I think that would be a huge benefit to those families, and possibly prevent us from losing families, as several have indicated, that they, they're already looking at other alternative options for education, because they aren't excited about large class sizes. The question I have around that is, have we or will we explore a temporary boundary change to mitigate some of those issues at the particular sites that are experiencing really significant capacity issues? Or if there's another way that we could possibly address that? I know that I've seen some schools do, what are they called?
Portable.
Yes, portable, thank you, thank you, yeah. Like adding a portable classroom or something like that, just for, and it's not ideal, but if we could do something to kind of minimize the negative impacts that our families and students are experiencing, I think that would be something we should at least evaluate. I also had a question about the Park Center security entrances, I don't know if anybody here can answer that, but it sounds like only one of their entrances is secure, is that what I heard, or am I misunderstanding?
To be clear, one of them is secured from a standpoint of, you know, normally when we have someone from the outside come in, they come into a vestibule, they have to ring a buzzer, they get let into the office.
Controlled entry.
The controlled entry. So the main? The controlled entry. So the main entry that you see, and I believe it's, Kelly tell me if I'm wrong, on the Brooklyn Boulevard side,
Is the controlled entry.
Is the controlled entry.
But that's not what people usually do.
But the vast majority of people come in and out of the backside.
All the students come in off the backside.
Student and so forth. So the idea is noting how our flow in our building is, is adding a secondary controlled entry to the backside. So both sides, both of our main entry points have that.
It does have secure entry to be buzzed in on the backside. So you can't just walk through, it's just, you're not going in the vestibule and going into a secure office location.
Or somebody can let you in.
Right.
Yes, we have to have staff stationed out there to kind of monitor that door at all times.
That was my next question, is what are we
That's what we're doing today, but this is the long-term solution to it.
Okay, that was my only question about that.
So we can utilize that staff person better.
Wanted to make sure that we weren't just leaving a building unsecure or something.
Sorry, thank you for clarifying. No, the building is not unsecure.
I was pretty sure I was misunderstanding that, so I'm glad that I asked.
Thank you for clarifying.
And I know ECMAC has talked for many months or years about, you know, the enrollment projections and so forth. And, you know, we've had conversations, you know, what, what might we have to do potentially as an intermediate step? We're, we're watching enrollment to see. I don't know if John, you want to talk about?
Yeah, so, so Steve Fisk and I and our enrollment team, but specifically, we have been talking with Fernbrook about the spaces that are there, the spaces and how they're used and what options do we have in the short term to be able to handle if we have to add an extra section of a class. I think the example he gave is today, he has five sections of fifth grade, but next year he will need a sixth. Just with the growth, there's no way, we have a big fourth grade coming up to fifth next year, so we have to add another section of that. So we need to find a place to put that one other classroom. So then we're looking at, are there other programs within there that we could even temporarily move to a different location to free up that space to have a minimal impact on the neighborhood? People of Fernbrook, where, where I think the example, one of the examples we used is there's a, is it Depp-Hardorf hearing with two eighty-seven?
There's already been some shifting of some of the programs already, which started in Flabros, okay, I was in the back, but but also this is anticipation and watching those K numbers. And so to John's point, looking at sort of the available space and working with community ed and, and just really, you know, just watching that carefully and to see what, if anything, we're in a position where we need to make some kind of movement. But not as a surprise, and we don't want to surprise families. We want to be respectful of the, of the school, our community as well. So that's been the process and typically we're looking at, you know, when we're adding a section that starts in earnest in the beginning of early August. But we're watching that now, knowing full well that we need to be able to, to move possibly if needed sooner than later.
And we do mitigate it too, as you know, earlier than that by doing things like hard closes, right? There's, nobody's been allowed to open enroll in Fernbrook for a couple of years.
Right? So like right now, you're only getting in Fernbrook if you reside in that attendance area versus a lot of our, you know, we have movement in our
high level of movement and in district transfers, open enrollment in our district, but when we start getting sites that are getting close to capacity or over capacity, we make changes at the enrollment center right away too. So there are some
Maple Grove senior too.
Maple Grove senior's been a hard close for
We're starting to see that move into the middle schools.
Yeah.
What is the balance of undercapacity versus overcapacity in terms of students? So we have undercapacity on the east side, overcapacity on the west side. What does that look like?
Actual number of kids, you could handle, I think the undercapacity, it's hard to say east-west because where exactly is that line? But as a district, we have the ability to have about twenty-five hundred students added to what we have today without touching a building if, if kids just dropped in on a helicopter exactly where we wanted them. The problem we run into is that's not how they come in. So the areas that are already developed, built out and have, like I said, the majority of the houses that don't have students in them, that's where the capacity lives. So we have a couple of elementaries that have fifty percent capacity open in them. They're typically a smaller elementary. They might only hold three hundred and eighty or four hundred and twelve kids versus a Basswood that holds nine, what are you, nine hundred and sixty?
Right now, nine sixty is
Is your capacity? Yeah, that's your top.
Where a
Without four star and other
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, so we've had, that's a good example of, in order to get to that number, we have to look at four star and those other things and saying, oh, we have to put those somewhere else so he can have that capacity. So like a Fernbrook as an example, next year we'll go to almost a thousand students. They have that same capacity, nine sixty something, so they're going to go over. And even with, as Steve had mentioned, you know, kind of our phase one, we were looking at those buildings and what things could we move, those pieces. We have to also start to think that, okay, that buys us a little time, maybe that covers next school year. If a building is approved and starts, like I said, we still have till the fall of twenty-six. So we may have to look at a secondary temporary change, whether that is a portable or whether that is saying we're going to pick a specific neighborhood that might be where the new school is and say, we're going to have you guys for a year go to a different elementary than Fernbrook because there's capacity there. Those are decisions we have to have, but they become, again, a community decision a bit where we have to say, this is what we want to do, but the, the plus is you're going to end up at this brand new school when it's all done.
And Tamara, you as a board also talked about in this proposal concerning some immersion programming development and we would need that time to build out. And where does that, where we house it? There needs to be a committee or a task force to really dig into that with community, make, make some recommendations. So while that new school would be being built, that would be happening so that, again, you could time up all the, any of the boundary changes go all happen at the same time. Instead of that being a continual pain point for us year over year.
So you said there's twenty-five hundred unused seats. In one side of the district and then
Springfield across the
Springfield across the district and then
But we're starting to go, that includes everything.
How many, how many extra chairs are we filling in schools that are over capacity?
Say that again, how many extra chairs are we filling?
In schools that are
Where, where, yes. Where, where, the schools that are over or are over capacity, how many kids are in an over capacity position?
So we're a hundred and fifty kids over at Maple Grove Senior today. We're not over, we're, we're at about nine hundred kids at Fernbrook today.
And that's capacity?
Capacity is nine sixty-one, I think. I mean, I'm trying to remember back to the chart, but I think that's pretty close. We projected them, I think, at nine ninety-three for next year. Our predictive enrollment analytics tool project is, projects them at thousand fourteen. As we're figuring, we're, we're calculating growth a little bit differently because they made an assumption based on a number in August and I made an assumption based on, I can go out to that site and look at it and see exactly how many houses have been built. They can't do that, they're in in Los Angeles, so. So I just feel like they added a little bit, the growth a little bit faster than it should have been. So, so that's the, the local knowledge to be able to make a tweak. But then the following year, I think they would go from being forty-seven kids over to about a hundred and fifty kids over. I don't remember top of my head how far Maple Grove would go over in the next year, but I know the projection had them close to two sixty over a couple of years out. And Maple Grove, we've done things like, oh, let's take all this bank of lockers here and we turned it into two classrooms. We're, we're out of space to do that. We don't know where else to go.
We've taken office spaces, turned them into classrooms, so staff are in their classrooms now and don't have office spaces. There's all sorts of things that we've done.
Lunch, people have to stand to eat lunch. We don't have enough space, by a lot, to be able to fit that.
You said Maple Grove Senior High is already over capacity. Fernbrook is close to being over capacity.
Osseo Middle will go over capacity. It's not there yet, but it's close.
What's the capacity there?
I would have to probably refer you to all the study group information with ECMAC, where all that detail is, it's at least in with the links, it was the January presentation.
It's been in our previous documents in detail.
That have all the detailed information.
The January work session at, we were at the OALC.
And so the, as we've talked with this in ECMAC over the years and as a board, really the geography and transportation limits continue to be a significant barrier, but I think those are really good questions that we're going to have to ensure that the community understands with this ask and where we're at at schools and where we're repurposing. But unfortunately, we've got that huge business corridor right in the middle, so it just makes it not feasible from everything we've studied before. I'm guessing we'll certainly be looking at everything again. ECMAC will unpeel it again. But it just, it hasn't made sense for the benefit of our scholars to attempt to, to do kind of the, the wild transportation puzzle to make that work.
I want to also just, I've been doing it for myself to continually remind myself, I know that a new school and those things get the attention, but it's the huge improvement in every site. And especially like what's near and dear to me is our special education programming and the sites we need for those, for the services we provide for EL. I know our STEAM, delivering our STEAM programming, like I'm looking at, Kim, your building would, would not look the same.
Right.
It would be dramatically different in Brooklyn Middle, right? So the programming facility upgrades to really closely tied to learning outcomes, right? So I, I think we can all be really diligent about the thing to talk about the new school when it's so many other things that you saw from every study group that is included here that really in the end changes how we meet the needs of each scholar that you set forth in your strategic plan.
And our long-term plan has been renovating this entire time, so it's, it's not that we, we don't have schools in disrepair. So if you go and get out there and visit the schools, yes, there's, we do need to bring them into the, some into the next generation and that's why we have all of the different items in this plan, but I just, I would emphasize that to Cory's point about thinking about a new building, we, we need people seeing where we're at even today because we have great schools, we've made great renovations intentionally over the past many years. So just, I think we just need to make sure people understand where we are today and where we're seeking to go.
Yeah, buildings are, you've all been in them, they're well kept. They're, they're beautiful, right? Even though they're old. So it's not that, it's just, you know, the learning spaces, we know, impact how kids perform. And, you know, we want that to be attractive as we are competing for enrollment. We know that, right? That's another factor that we're neighboring many, many districts and even with, as we rethink maybe one of our elementaries, how can we do, like, I'm thinking of Brian and Kate's somewhere back here. When we made that well-laid change, how much have we grown in our early childhood services and our numbers exponentially is my sense. We've grown the change in early childhood programming and the number of kids accessing that is, is different. And then the board has wanted a commitment to family and community engagement. We need a better space for that. We need to make that a welcoming. And then Indian Ed's also on my mind as we continue to provide better physical spaces for the kinds of events and services that we aspire to. So the list goes on and on and just kind of refreshing our memories on some of those things that are a part of it. I'm glad you called it some of the physical barriers in the district and the transportation challenges that can come with. I think they would come, honestly, if this doesn't go forward, you need to make boundary changes with what we have. That'll dramatically change ride lengths. We definitely don't want kids walking across certain areas and it's almost impossible to cross certain really large roadways, right? So those are complications just on how we're built as a district. So I'll kind of pause there. I just want to make sure those things got acknowledged.
Yeah, so we're well over time, but this is the critical discussion of tonight before this advances to the board. So Cory, is there any additional information you need from board members as we think about that next step in the process?
I'll just maybe say, you're going to digest a lot. We threw a lot at you here. Again, we've done it like time and time. So as you're thinking through it tonight, like maybe over the course of this week, if you have follow-up questions, because we'll, we'll make a final agenda decision when we meet Thursday morning and we, we publish on Friday, right? So we got two, three more days to answer questions, give you information you need if you're, you feel like you have gaps in, in what you know. Any one of our team is available to you on that. So that's probably where I'd leave it right now is each of you can think about that.
Will you continue to do the accelerated updating with the LTAF and regardless of whether or not the board votes for this bond?
I guess that's, that's the direction we need from the board. There's, there's certain pieces, obviously, the Brooklyn Middle, there's pieces that we we will do because all of these projects were spread across our tenure plan. We had planned to go in and do a remodel of Brooklyn Middle. We had planned to go into Northview to finish the classrooms at Park Center. If we know we're going to go in with some pieces of bond, we want to do those together to create a completed project. So it meets the strategic plan today rather than we go into Park Center, do the CTE security entrances and then stop and then wait for five years and then come back and do the classrooms. We have that opportunity to do it at once to really accelerate to that strategic plan and that goal. So, so that's, that's the goal. We're not changing the dollar amount of LTFM. We're just shifting it forward for a bit and then lessening it after that.
One last question. You talked about the importance of the needs of safety and security and I see that most of that's coming out of the bond. Is it only available to come out of the bond? Is it restricted to that?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's, there've been a number of legislative platforms that tried to get safety and security added to LTFM, but today we can't do that and it doesn't seem to be on any of the current agendas that are, that are built, yeah, that I'm aware of, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a lot of, it's just a lot. But we're also very excited about the potential and I think, I like the way, Heather, you were framing some of that. We, if we're in tune to what concerns or questions our community might have, then we can, just like our last campaign, informational campaign, right? We want people informed. We saw from Peter, again, word of mouth is our, that's how our district runs, you know, in a lot of ways. So we need to make sure that the people understand what's true and not rumor, right? So that informational campaign to be able to strike the spring is huge and kind of combating some of the narratives that could be out there. So again, if you have follow-up, any, anything you need, let us know, you know. Feel free to just reach out directly to team members and a lot of times you start with me, but because time's kind of squeezed, if there's a topic you need, I think any one of the team members can answer, answer that. So I'm going to shift us to vision card B.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I don't think we heard from Tamara or Sarah what their support was.
Yeah, for time's sake, I could just keep it brief. One of the strategic structures of being on the school board that we serve on different committees, so it's helpful that I had a lot of this information in advance, working with John on the ECMAC committee. So it's really helpful to see how thoughtful and thorough all the presentations are. I also was encouraged having parents on that committee that are at these overcapacity schools, so to hear the voices of the parents, I really appreciate seeing that. So from my perspective, weighing all the different risks and costs, I'm in support. I think delaying capacity issues would be unwise and there's too many greater future risks, too many future unknowns. And I do appreciate that, you know, we take into account the survey, what Thomas brought up at the last work session, you know, we take seriously people's being financially stressed, you know, we take that to heart. So it's, it's weighing also, you know, the greater risk though in the, the future unknown, so. So yeah, it's helpful, a lot of that was covered in the ECMAC meeting, so thanks, John.
Did you want to add anything, Tamara? Um, yeah, I mean, I'm definitely a hundred percent of way on board with the need. I have deep concerns about the timing, both in terms of what we're asking our voters after passing a referendum last year and the property tax that we've talked about and then also the political climate of feeling like our schools are fully funded and it still concerns me to see survey after survey showing that people think that our schools are fully funded and even whatever the legislature is able to provide this year. We're still looking at severe deficits on what we need to do in order to serve our students and also support our teachers and our ESPs. I'm increasingly concerned about the looming employment crisis. I'm also very concerned about the optics of this. I would prefer to see the stuff cleaned up and the LTFM stuff first before we go and ask for another school that will be placed in Maple Grove. So that's where I'm at right now with this. But I appreciate everybody's work and I'll consider, continue to consider this.
Okay, thank you. So yes, we'll move on to the next item.
Thanks. And if, if you board members caught in my weekly update last week, I tried to preview just a little bit of this presentation because as Brian and our team come back up, you're getting pretty familiar with them now. We're on our fourth of five vision cards. And the data collected, again, here, you've heard this before, but this is new again, right? So we continue to push and challenge ourselves on what really is most impactful for our system. So we've talked often about data versus information, right? And I'm proud of the group in this, in this card especially because we get so much achievement data from the state and other, you know, pieces that don't really inform instruction and impact our ability to change practice. So I think our team worked really hard here to, you're going to see some new things that we haven't. A new story about our performance that really gives us greater understanding. And if we understand it better, we're going to come up with a stronger plan to impact the results, right? So especially graduation, you know, we're looking at this in multiple pathways in different ways than we have in the past. So especially graduation, you know, we're looking at this in multiple pathways, in different ways than we have in the past. And how do we capture each and every scholar and how they're doing towards, you know, again, realization of the mission and vision that we have as a district? So I know there's a lot to cover, so I'll just kind of hand it over to, I don't know, Brian, you wanted to say some things here first as well before our team gets going?
Yeah, I think given-
Our last, sorry, our last one will be in June, so that's the last of the five, so.
Given, given the time, I think I will forego the comments that I was gonna offer. You've captured many of them and I'll just introduce the team that's with us this evening. Our director of learning and achievement, Robin Consolus, our two coordinators for data and assessment, Jenna, John Schoyerstad and Tom Watkins. I can't thank them enough for their persistence and their collaboration and partnership with leaders across these various vision cards to, to be as thoughtful as we can be as well as trying to visually represent data that we, informing each of these vision cards that for the first, some of these are first-time presentations of data captured in this way. And so it is our best thinking to date, but we really want to make sure that it's visually represented in a way that you can comprehend and understand. We've, we've had to go through the slides a number of times to try to say, okay, we gotta really make sure that we're able to understand this at a deep level and we want you all to be able to understand the information we're trying to capture and the story that we're trying to share about academic achievement and the culture of achievement in our district. So I said I was gonna be brief, let me stay brief. And pass it over to Robin and our team.
We're trying to get set up, I'll talk a little bit about the data that we used to fill this card. I'm really excited about this data. As Superintendent McIntyre talked about, it's, it's data that we haven't shown before and I really think it speaks to the opportunities and experiences and support we give to our students. As we started this, the data that we've shown previously has been that really high-level satellite data. In this card, we get a little bit closer to the map data that really steers us in the direction that we want, that we need to, to look at in order to make program changes that will really affect the outcomes for students. And so it gave us an opportunity to dig deeper. Also, as we look at the data, one of the things that we realized as we're going deeper and really looking at some specific student groups, we don't have comparisons from other, other districts that we can use because we're looking at such detail in the data. So that's gonna be one thing, as we continue to collect this data, we're going to want to keep watching our, our progress towards and the goals that we're making. The other piece is as we're looking at student data, some of our, the groups that we're looking at are really small. I don't know if you saw that, I mean, we're looking at groups as small as three. So we know that the data will be really variable, but our outcomes for our students are the same. We desire that all students reach these goals that we have, so we're gonna continue to nurture that. Thank you. So we're gonna really be discussing, of course, strategic direction B and how it looks in our data. And then really, we're, as Dr. Bass talked about, looking for feedback from you. Did this need this, do you have questions, help me better, help me better demonstrate and be transparent about this data? And the vision cards are on the table, we are looking to talk about our core vision, how our district mission looks in our day-to-day experiences for our students. What's connected to our three-year operational plan for the district is really through the program improvement process and systematic equity tools and our special education opportunity review that is happening right now. So some of the data we will see will be referred to students for their special education services and how that shows up for them in their graduation. And so we know that we're gonna even have more information to this as we go through the review. We chose five indicators to look at for strategic, strategic direction B, which is to build and nurture a culture of achievement by providing content-rich, rigorous and individualized pathways. And then I talked about, we're getting a little closer to map data, which is our desire. And as, as we bring and share this data with our sites, that's where they dig into the street data. So this, this card especially will help sites really dig in and look at their specific student groups. Well, Jenna? Turn it over to you, you can start speaking.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. So our first indicator, B1, there are two metrics related to staff professional learning. The first is system professional learning participation and the second is system monthly learning participation. So system professional learning occurs three times per year, usually in October, mid-year and near the end of year in April or May. And this learning opportunity brings together licensed staff from all sites and the ESC or the Education Servicing to participate in required and optional sessions tailored to specific staff roles. It's on these days where staff can learn about new curriculum adoptions, tools and best practices as well as deepen their understanding and skill in previously adopted curriculum practices. Participation in these learning days are critical for staff to earn CEUs toward licensure and to continually improve their practice. To calculate this metric, the average attendance across all three sessions within each site was determined. And then next, the median of the site averages was calculated to avoid any one site from skewing the data in either direction. And that median of the site averages was eighty-nine percent. So on this next slide, we are going to see the data disaggregated by grade level, which helps us in understanding the participation at a deeper level. So at the elementary level, a median of ninety percent participated and at the secondary, a median of eighty-nine percent participated in the system professional learning phase. And within the system monthly data, when they're disaggregated by the grade levels again, the median participation at the elementary level was sixty percent and the median participation at the secondary level was fifty-three percent. When elementary schools averaged, or within elementary schools, the average participation ranged from thirty-four percent to seventy-two percent. And among secondary schools, the range was thirty-four to seventy-six percent. Now I'll pass it over to Brian.
Thank you. Like indicator B1, indicator B2 is a processing heater, so it's looking at adult practices. The dropout prevention review is based upon the dropout prevention practice guide from the What Works Clearinghouse within the Institute of Education Sciences. The dropout prevention guide contains evidence-based recommendations for reducing the dropout rate and increasing graduation rates. Each recommendation provides practical strategies, implementation steps, tips for overcoming challenges and the research base that it came from. The dropout prevention review was developed as part of the vision card process and was administered for the first time to secondary school equity teams in preparation for our February 2023 equity seminars. For each of our secondary schools, a recorder provided equity team responses on behalf of the site. This new instrument yields three scale scores ranging from point five six to point seven nine. This slide provides the dropout prevention review results by question and scale. In order to retain the full range of response values, for each question, the response options were coded as follows. Never was equal to zero, sometimes was point three three, most of the time was point six six and consistently was one. For each of the three scales, the results for the questions were averaged into a scale score, which was reported for this indicator. The scale with the highest score at baseline was monitoring student progress and the scale providing the most room for growth was intensive individualized student support. And next, Jenna will describe the results for indicator B3.
This metric for data source included in B3 is the Family State Clever Survey Culture of Achievement Scale. The survey was conducted in the spring of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and a randomly stratified sample of families with children enrolled in the district was used and nine hundred and forty-nine families responded. So to arrive at that seventy-seven percent reported in this vision card, responses by survey item were segmented by race, ethnicity, student service group, gender and grade range. Next, an average across all the scale questions was calculated within each group. And then finally, the median percentage of all the groups is what it reported, so that's that seventy-seven percent. This method of calculation was used to ensure that no particular group would want to have moderated that another. So on this table, we can see those six questions that were included in the Culture of Achievement Scale. Staff effectively communicate with my scholar, staff know my scholar's interests, staff address the needs of my scholar, my scholar's been able to use their strengths, staff believe my scholar can succeed and staff provide an appropriate level of challenge for my scholar. And the district level response rates here represented are the two most positive options, so that was often and always. And the survey items with the highest rate of positive responses were staff believe my scholar can succeed at eighty-seven percent and staff effectively communicate with my scholar at eighty-one percent. And so this table, or chart I should say, breaks down those responses by race and ethnicity. And the groups with the highest percentages included families who identify as West African, families who identify as white with a home language other than English at eighty-eight percent and families who identify as Asian with a home language of Vietnamese at eighty-five percent. So moving on to B4, our next outcome indicator, and that consists of two metrics, the Achievement Index and the twelve-by-twelve. And so this is some new, new stuff that we mentioned, we haven't reported data in this way before. The Achievement Index metric consists of four measures. Students earning at least one semester or trimester credit in following courses, co-secondary enrollment options or PSEO courses, concurrent or articulated courses and advanced placement GP, international bachelorate or IB and high performance or HP courses. The next metric was students earning a professional certification in one of the following, CPR and first aid, EMT and BMR, students completing an internship, apprenticeship or related experience. And last but not least, students earning a Minnesota by-Lincoln seal. In this metric, each student was counted one time regardless of how many of these four items they achieved and a total of fifty-nine percent of students enrolled during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year had achieved at least one of these four measures of the index. So these particular measures, measures were chosen as they're inclusive of a variety of pathways for students to show college and career readiness. The twelve-by-twelve metric below Achievement Index shows the percent of students who are on track to or have earned twelve credits that could, excuse me, credits that could lead to college credit by the time they graduate. Courses that could lead to the student earning college credit include PSEO, concurrent, articulated, AP and IB courses. To be considered on track in this metric, students in grade nine must have earned three or more credits, students in grade ten must have earned six or more credits, students in grade eleven must have earned nine or more credits and students in grade twelve must have earned twelve or more credits in any of those aforementioned courses by the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And a total of eleven students were either on track to or had earned those twelve credits by the end of their twelfth grade year. Eleven percent. Oh, sorry, I was guessing. Oh, sorry, eleven percent of students. The twelve-by-twelve metric was developed to monitor and promote access to each student to experience college-level rigor and the opportunity to earn college credit before graduation. Access to enrollment in these types of courses for students is important for many reasons. Some of these are providing students with more advanced rigorous coursework, improves their high school education and prepares them for the expectations of college. Providing college coursework exposure to students who are underrepresented in co-secondary institutions or who may not have considered college as a possible pathway. And participating in these courses is a positive predictor of high school graduation, college enrollment, college persistence and a lower time to college graduation. These charts shows that Achievement Index disaggregated by race and ethnicity. These data show that the groups with the highest rates of achievement were students identifying as white and speaking English as their home language at seventy-one percent, students identifying as white and speaking a language other than English at home at sixty-nine percent and students identifying as Asian and speaking Vietnamese in their home at sixty-eight percent. Additionally, we can see there were six student groups that are higher than that district average of fifty-nine percent. The Achievement Index data were also disaggregated by service group and gender and depicted in the charts on this slide of students receiving, receiving services. Those receiving free or reduced-priced meals had the highest rate of achievement at forty-seven percent. And when looking at rates by gender, students identifying as female at sixty-three percent were eight percent higher than those identifying as male. This chart shows the twelve-by-twelve metric disaggregated by race and ethnicity. And the students that had the highest rates of being on track for or meeting the requirements of this metric were students who identify as Asian and speak English as their home language at nineteen percent, students who identify as Asian and speak a language other than English, Hmong or Vietnamese in their home at nineteen percent and students who identify as white and speak a language other than English at eighteen percent. On this metric, there are eight student groups that performed higher than the district rate of eleven percent. This metric was also disaggregated by service group and gender. Students receiving free reduced-priced meals had the highest rate of achieving twelve-by-twelve of all service groups at six percent. And students identified as female achieved twelve-by-twelve at a slightly higher rate than the overall average of eleven percent and major twelve percent. And now I'll pass it to Tom to move to B5.
So for this indicator, we have four student outcome measures. Each of these measures focuses on graduation, continuation and/or dropout rates for students in the class of 2021, the most recent year for which data are available. We expect to receive results for the class of 2022 later this month. For each of these measures, we're using the percent of groups reaching the benchmarks and we can see that our baseline scores range from sixteen, I'm sorry, eighteen to sixty percent of student groups reaching those benchmarks. In the next few slides, we'll describe results for each of these measures in greater detail. The graduation or continuation rate refers to students graduating in four years or continuing on for a fifth year in special education or multilingual programming. We're looking at the first of three slides of results. Here we can see graduation or continuing rates of ninety percent or more for ten groups in the class of 2020 and six groups in the class of 2021. The results are shown in blue. And in addition, there were seven groups in 2020 and six in 2021 that met the benchmark of eighty percent, which is shown in green. In the second slide of these results, we can see that again, most groups met or exceeded the benchmark of eighty percent graduating or continuing. And these results are again shown in green and blue. And then on the third and final slide of the results on graduation or continuation rate, at the bottom of this table, we can see the percent of student groups across the three slides with eighty percent or more students graduating in four years or continuing on for a fourth, fifth year receiving special education or multilingual programming. These were the values that were used for card B. There was a reduction from seventy-one percent for the class of 2020 down to sixty percent for the class of 2021. In order to drill down into this data, we calculated the four-year or on-time dropout rates for students receiving special education services at some point in high school. This table breaks down the dropout rates by race, program and gender group within students receiving special education services. This is the top part of the table on this slide. We can see differences in rates from year to year as well as between groups. There was a lower percentage of students receiving services dropping out in 2020. and twenty. And then this is the bottom part of the table on this slide. After reviewing the data from both classes, for students receiving special education services, the four-year dropout rate benchmark was set at zero. In the in the margins of the table, the calculations are shown. For example, for the class of two thousand and twenty, there were nineteen total student groups large enough to report, and ten of these groups reached the benchmark, so fifty-three percent of groups reached the benchmark. The percent of student groups reaching these benchmarks dropped from the class of two thousand and twenty to the class of two thousand and twenty-one. The results for the class of two thousand and two, as we said earlier, is going to be expected later this spring. Our third measure focuses on a subset of students receiving special education services who we expect to graduate on time with a non-IEP diploma based upon their IEP. So IEP-based diplomas refer to cases where students receiving special education services earn a diploma by completing the requirements within that IEP. The non-IEP graduation rate is the percent who meet the standard graduation requirements. To identify the appropriate subset of students for this measure, we included students last enrolled in twelfth grade in comprehensive high schools and credited to Osiris schools by the Minnesota Department of Education for the official four-year graduation and dropout rates. We also excluded students receiving services for autism, developmental cognitive disability, physical impairment, or severe multiple impairment. Finally, students receiving services in setting three or four were also removed from this analysis. Results were only reported for groups of three or more students. A benchmark of sixty percent was set based upon the range of the group values, and five of the nine groups, or fifty-six percent, were in green because they reached this benchmark. Because.
That's okay. The reason why we took we focused on specific groups was because these are the groups that most likely have the opportunity to be in core instruction for the majority of their credit-bearing courses, and the groups that we talked about that have not been included are the groups that most like oftentimes continue on for an additional year and are going to always see the transition.
And that's really what our next indicator will be. We'll talk about, you know, the continuing students. All right, yeah, no, it's all good. So because the group sizes are really small, we might see more variation from one year to the next. And then we know that these pathways for these students begin at elementary school, and this is when we start providing students with access to grade-level standards and core instruction. Here we transition to our fourth measure for indicator B five, which is the percent of continuing students receiving IEP-based diplomas. So this is a different group of students with different expectations in their IEP, and that's why our focus shifts here to earning IEP-based diplomas rather than non-IEP-based diplomas. Looking at the two most recent graduating classes, there's been an increase in the number of students receiving special education services continuing past their fourth year. This is an increase from forty-eight to fifty-two, as well as an increase in the percentage of these continuing special education students who eventually earn an IEP-based diploma, and that increased from twenty-five percent to forty percent. This table breaks down the continuing students receiving services by race, program, and gender. This measure focuses on the green or benchmark color and percentages at the bottom, the percentage of student groups reaching the benchmark of forty percent or more students earning IEP-based diplomas. These values, which appear on the card, show an increase from thirteen percent for the class of two thousand and twenty to twenty-two percent for the class of two thousand and twenty-one. And at this point, I'll pass it back to you.
So really thinking about our next steps as far as strategic direction B is we're going to continue to look at data and find the data that best aligns with the strategic direction and being very transparent about the data and setting goals for ourselves. One of the pieces that we've been talking about all along is really making sure that we can humanize the data and trying to find more ways to improve student voice in the data that we're presenting to you. And we also know that as we're starting to look at data in different ways than we have before, we need to review how we collect the data, the types of data we collect, and the frequency we collect it at, and how we decide to get it, how we get it in different ways. So those are the pieces that are our next steps. Additionally, we know that this data has some implications for programming across our sites and making sure that the sites have access to this data so that they can dig deeper, as I said earlier, and really look at that street data or that student-level data to find out what is going on with those students, what are the stories.
So I just want to jump in, board members. If you're picking up on, this is a big leap in change from how and what we're measuring, much greater detail, not as much about like we get from the state that this is not as instructionally relevant or helpful to us. So some of these measures, I just want to call out, we have a lot of work to do. We're not happy with where we're at. We're not okay with that, but the first step is identify it, and then to set some targets. And what we have now is some measurable targets, some areas that we've never had before at this level of detail. So that's the first step, which just gives us that greater focus, right? And as I as I met with the team to talk through this, not shying away from that, right, and really leaning into that, knowing that we have forces working against us, and I think of Kate and our special team and the shortages we have and the licensure challenges we have and the workload things that we're working on and compliance, lots of things, you know, are part of this conversation, but in the end, we're measuring how we're doing, we have a better way to measure how we're doing year over year now, that as we alter instruction or programming, we should see changes in these results versus a huge lagging set of data that I would think of a special group that was all just kind of generally put into one and not disaggregated out in this this fashion. So, you know, I won't be here next year to see how well you did, but I think the first, this was a huge first step in just saying, we're going to look at this completely differently. And I think the level of accountability now that will come with it and the level of focus is going to is going to be the big shift. So I don't know, Brian, if you want to add anything to that, because we've had a number of conversations as we've worked with Robyn and Kate and the rest of the team.
I think I think about strategic growth and change and the idea that we want to be able to to observe the impact that initiatives or evidence-based practices that we're piloting, that we're trying to implement at our sites, we want to see the impact of that on our data, right? And to what extent are those programs, those evidence or those set of evidence-based practices improving student achievement outcomes? And so I think that that this this card is giving us, okay, so when we look inside and we dig a little bit deeper, here are some of the things that we're seeing as metrics. Now, what programs should be contributing to increasing the outcomes, achievement outcomes that we have? And if there are not, then we've got to interrogate them and examine them and understand where we, is this right for our system still? Should we be looking at other programs that are more effective for our scholars and are showing in similar demographics that they show growth? I mean, those are those are the things that that this gives us an opportunity to to get tighter in our alignment and understanding the impact of the program that we offer on student achievement outcomes.
We have many other things, but it, as I've simplified this, I mean, those five indicators. One is, what's the fidelity to the district-approved curriculum and PD? The second one is, how well how well are we doing with student supports? How do we know? Like, we've never really had great measures on when we when we look at that. We've talked a lot about classroom, climate, and respect, how we have another measure or a way to look at that differently, and then the whole career and college readiness topic that we've talked a lot about, right? It's giving us a different way to index that and really complement that against our what we offer and what changes, like Brian said, we need to make. So that's how I kind of dislike, those are the core indicators behind the measures, and then coming up with what do we aspire to? What's meaningful progress? What's our vision? And having some year-over-year measures that you can all get as a board. So with that, I'll turn over to the board members for reflection, comment, questions. I think we're still intending to come back with a, you know, smaller, shorter presentation next week at the board meeting like we've done before. But this is, Chance, you're there.
So just so refresh my memory, I started on the board with the ECAT process. This is the fruition of that, but what we've done is we identified the needs with that process, and now we've spent, how long has it been? It's almost two years? Has it been that long?
This is our first year.
First year, okay. So we spent a year coming up with new metrics to measure the discrepancies that we have. And so the next set of presentations, will those show action and change?
So like we talked about before, you'll get the final vision card in June, and that's the rhythm for the year. So we kind of worked in reverse order, E, D, C, B, A, because that's how the data, when the data is available to us, correct me if I'm wrong. So every other month now, that's the rhythm, you will get, here's the new updated vision card. So as you, in theory, next year, as you go through the year, it's not just done all at once, it's done throughout the year, because we, data comes to us at different times of the year when we collect it or when it's provided to us. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Yeah. So as we've rolled it out for the first time, that would be your rhythm or pattern moving into next year. And then every year, you're going to reevaluate, is that working for you? Right?
So a year from now, we would see, for example, the beginning impact of our special education opportunity review that Kerry is working on, our phase two, that's going to give us, that's digging a little bit deeper, and is going to give us recommendations for an action plan that we'll start implementation around. And so we'll start to see, I mean, it'll be early at that point in the game, but we'll begin to see how the things on our operational plan are having an impact on the metrics year over year.
And so you just said you'll, we'll see an action plan when?
Before the end of the school year.
Before the end of the school year.
Kate, I'm looking at Kate, our Director of Student Services. And that's our timeline.
The review's done by then.
That's the plan.
And I really appreciate everybody's work here, but I just want to point out that we talk a lot about identifying the problem, but we don't see a lot of movement and a solution. And so I really feel a sense of urgency in moving that along.
Yeah, that's what the operational, and so remember, this was also the first year of district, department, and site improvement plan changes. Actually, next year will be the first implementation year for the sites. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, right?
This was the first year of implementation.
Yeah, it was a learning year item, right? So getting the infrastructure in place to tell us what changes need to be made. Now, Kate's a good example, that that study's happening now, right? The action plan's coming, we hope, right?
From my department plan?
Yeah, the Kerry, the Kerry review. That's a one example, right?
Yeah, we have a department plan and the Kerry plan, so.
And on the department plan is talking about these restrictive environment, which contributes to students needing core instruction. And so that that piece, as they're working, that was in implementation and removal this year, so that's the plan that is in place based on what they already knew. So we should start to see the benefits from that moving forward too.
And I would also add, every month, board members, you get an update from every department tied to each of the five strategic directions on the actions we're taking. That's a twenty-page document you get once a month on what's happening in each and every department that tries to give you a sense for the work being done. Hopefully they're helpful. If they're not, let me know, we can do that a different way, right?
I think it's really helpful, especially because I too feel Tamara's urgency. I mean, I've been on the board for a while now, and it feels like some of these things we have been talking about since before I was on the board, right? These are really pressing issues, and it sometimes feels like we're not making much progress, but it's a lot easier to see that we are in those reports and as we continue to have the vision cards and the updates on them. One of the things that I'm really interested in is the scales and questions slide. So I'm just curious, I feel like I maybe misunderstood this, which student groups were, was it like just this whole, the, is this, this isn't the whole student body, this is?
What's the number on the bottom corner?
Sorry, it's sixty-three.
The achievements scale.
The skills and questions, monitoring student progress, intensive individualized student support, engaging students and helping them manage challenges page. I just wasn't sure if that was part of the the family stakeholder survey, if it was like the nine hundred and some people that you said participated or where exactly I missed it.
You're talking about the first indicator, B one?
Yes, I think it's B one or B two. It must be B one.
B two, okay.
I think it's B two.
Okay, B two.
Yeah, and so your question is like, is this from the stakeholder survey?
Yeah, like where is this data from? I missed that.
Yeah, so this is actually the first time we've ever provided this data, and this is something we built for the vision card, and so.
I meant like what population is it?
This is just, we have equity teams that came to our equity seminar in February, and so this is.
A survey of those people?
Yes.
And their understanding of how they're doing this work?
Yes, yes, a self-report on implementation, yes.
Okay, so it's maybe a little bit subjective in the sense that it's a self-report.
Totally, yes, it's definitely subjective.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, because there are things on here that I think are really valuable pieces of information for us to know, and also that we can definitely, you can already see just in the self-reporting that there's a lot of room to grow and do better.
Right, yes.
And I just wanted to take a moment to say that I think that this intensive individualized student support area, which is our lowest average, is something that we should really be working on way before it becomes a problem. It looks like to me this is like we provide intensive support to students who have fallen off track. We need to be providing the support before they fall off track, way before they fall off track. And so that's kind of where I feel like an incredible sense of urgency that we need to be mitigating some of these problems before they even happen. And again, I'll just say it again, I say it all the time, but I really think that we need a plan to have an individualized connection point for every single student before they enter high school to make that graduation plan for them so that, you know, to really mitigate the the dropout and the the issues that kids face during high school of just not even knowing what options they have. So I just wanted to throw my pitch for that again.
And that that top section does does go to that early identification before the next year.
Yeah, but this is just self-reporting, so it's not necessarily what kids are actually expecting.
Yeah, and you're getting into, I love that you said that, because that's a key piece of the MTSS work and how we screen to try to identify things early.
Yeah.
And then provide that tiered intervention support, whether it's academically or behaviorally, before it's to intervention, right? So that tiered approach, we're continuing to refine and dial in, right?
And if I, this was, the schools that we're reporting were high schools and middle schools.
Yes, right, just secondary sites.
Just secondary sites for that.
Would we consider, would we consider updating the family, student family survey to get some more of the hard data behind this? I know, because this is all point in time, and I think these are really great metrics that have helped to dissect what's necessary to move the dial on on achievement and a culture of excellence. So I would expect maybe this has been sparking some ideas on, like you said, how we collect data, what are the data sources, and what can change.
Right, yeah, we we definitely are looking right now at the student survey and the staff survey, so both of those stakeholder surveys, and ways to align with what's in the vision card. So I do think we'll see greater alignment when we revise that for, most likely for next year.
I did have a question. Interestingly, I had a conversation with somebody at the track meet earlier today about this exact topic, but the internship, apprenticeship, or related experience section of B four in the Achievement Index, how is that data gathered and do students receive credit for that?
So this is, it was reaching out to the sites to learn about different programs that they have that are like feeding into internship programs. So it's a collection of that data as well as the courses that are designated as internship courses. So some of them are earning color, earning credit, I can say, not credit, but internship credit within our system, and then others are purely for experience. So they they were to earn credit.
Is there, so are, is this percentage or is this information including all of the internship opportunities, whether or not it's credit-bearing?
Yes.
Okay. Because, like, how do you even track?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess that was my question, is how do we know? And how do we monitor that information? Because I know that people are coming to CRCs all the time offering internship opportunities, and the connection point is between the student and the business, it isn't facilitated by the school district. And so we don't necessarily even have reliable data on that metric?
Yeah.
Is there a way that we could improve that process so we could have that information and maybe even potentially consider allowing credit-bearing opportunities for kids who are participating in those opportunities through the summer or wherever they're doing it?
Yeah, I think.
Anyway, that was it.
I think this was one piece that we had some room for growth in how we're gathering the data, because it's the first time we're doing it. We, you know, gathered as much as we could, but you're totally right, that we don't know a lot of the internship experiences or apprenticeships that might be happening with students who are accompanying their parent maybe on the job or something like that. So I think that's some work that we have coming up and how to set up mechanisms for collecting that information, whether that be within the site or some other way.
Yeah, I think you just picked up on, and really, that was a great example of, here's our starting point, and there's going to be a lot of learning, but it gives us a focus, right? So now we're in. So now we're intentional moving forward, and by the time this comes back to you, the team might have, we've learned a lot, and here's how we're going to change or modify or recommend modifying this, while still being able, you know, kind of do that comparison for growth and improvement. I did want to also point out that the, as a cabinet, we'll be working on our district operational plan revision, like looking at, you know, when you think of those learning work, implementation, and standard work, if you remember, at our last work session, we talked about having twenty-eight items. That was a capacity tester for us this year. So we're going to be reviewing that and then beginning to draft what next year's look like, which will be in alignment again to the vision cards, right? So as those initiatives are there, how can we also be measuring our progress towards those? And some of those initiatives have a year, two, or three. Some are moving through more quickly. April twenty-sixth is when our next session for that is. And we will also be looking at a, we've really had a one-year at a glance this year, building out, based on our conversation with the board at the last work session, a three-year. So what's on the horizon? What's initiative maybe next year or maybe the year after that you've identified you want to look at? And as we, you, you were really clear as a board, you know, map that out for a three-year window, so that we, we're also, you know, keeping it in mind as we move outward forward.
Director Mitchell, do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions at this time. I just appreciate what you said, Robyn, about being transparent about the data. And I think it builds trust with the community when we're so specific with the data, and even sometimes when results are unflattering, but having something to work with. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. This is such a significant step forward in defining what do we mean by achievement? What are the underlying components of it? And to your point, like, to your point about, you know, we do have actions in place, and that, that is the element of our operational plan. Because one thing I was kind of thinking through was, where's the promising practices that we've typically done? But that's underneath, that's the lever that's going to tie up to the metrics. So that helps to kind of clarify that operational plan and all of the pieces that are influenced these outcomes. So I think this is a huge leap forward for us to be able to really now connect the operational plan to moving the dial on the outcomes. The only question I had or thought was, in, is there, are we missing any possible dimension in terms of how, besides staff development, how teachers and staff are feeling about their ability to thrive or to be part of that climate of excellence that would then impact this as well? And maybe that's more of that operational side, but I just, I, I feel like maybe there might be something missing there, or...
Those are some things that we've talked about as we're looking at the, the staff stakeholder survey. Because how do we, now that we're doing the vision cards, how do we reflect some of the things that we're wanting to know and change the questions in our surveys? So that's where Tom's actually has a group that is looking at the survey questions now and kind of digging in to see how can we better align with what we want to know? Because the survey questions have been around for quite a few years, and as our practices have changed and we're coming out of a very different situation and entering this, this new reality of coming back into school and learning kind of how to do this again and making sure everyone is safe and all those concerns, how do we show creativity, the, the strive for achieving, you know, helping our students achieve, how do we show that and demonstrate that in our survey questions?
We've wrestled with that a little bit in our conversation about the final vision card too, cover, letter A, that's coming in June.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, certainly there's a connection between the teachers and staff feeling that they can thrive, that then enables them to create the environment for scholars to thrive. So that's just kind of what I'm thinking through. Great, any other questions?
I think that's it for tonight. Sorry, we went over about thirty-five minutes, but I think it was time well spent. So thanks for sticking, sticking it out.
Okay, great, thank you, everybody. This work session is adjourned at eight thirty-five PM.
Nice. Lots of good information. Lots of good information.